All right, everyone, thank you for attending tonight. I'd like to get us started and I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31. Today is Thursday, March 29th, and this is the joint meeting of the Education Human Services Subcommittee and Town Council. Very quickly, just in the way of introductions so that everyone knows who's here in the audience and at the table with us, we have the Town Manager, Ron Sanangelo; Karen Harnoyes, the Finance Director; Denise Clements, our Town Council Chairperson; Martina Shea, Citizen Member for EHS Subcommittee. I'd also like to point out that John LaFlesh, Mr. John LaFlesh is the Superintendent Director of BayPath. He'll be working with Dean Yakabuchi, who's the Business Manager at BayPath. He'll be first on the agenda tonight after we approve our minutes. Dr. Jeff Valar, who is the Superintendent Receiver for the Southbridge Public Schools, is in attendance as well as -- in the pink is Andy Pelletier, our Director of Inspections and Health. Mr. Mike Trongley is near the door. He's our Veterans Agent and Director of the Community Center. Councilor Auguste Eves is in the audience. He's the Vice Chair of the Town Council. Ms. Margaret Morrissey's in the back. She's our Library Director. And Jim Cosgrove is actually our Cable Manager who's helping us because we are recording this meeting tonight. Citizens in the audience, Dave Adams and Jackie Ryan, thank you for being here. So our first order of business tonight, number one on the agenda, is vote to approve the Education and Human Services Meeting Minutes of March 1st, 2018, as everyone had a chance to read them. Are there any corrections or additions? I will have one or two unless someone else points them out. I'll point out, since I've been through them, that I will make sure that we add the time that the meeting adjourned on the back. I had it written down and I don't have it here corrected, but I'll also ask Mr. Daniel when we record them to add the documents that were not listed. We had several documents and I do have a list of them. Otherwise, the content was quite adequate in my mind despite a rather extended discussion of nearly two hours. So I'll give you a second to look at those and then if anyone wants to make a motion and second that motion, we'll move on.
Make a motion that we accept the EHS Town Council Subcommittee Minutes of Thursday, March 1st, 2018.
Thank you. Any other corrections or additions, anything to be deleted? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. We'll move on to item number two on the agenda, which is review of fiscal year 2019 BayPath vocational technical high school budget and entertain a motion to submit to council as presented. As already introduced, I'll ask that Mr. LaFlesh and Mr. Yakabuchi take over and we're really glad that you gentlemen were able to join us tonight. Thank you for coming.
All right, and thank you for having us. We're happy to be here again. It's a spring ritual, so we have to be here. Before I begin, I do want to say that our two Southbridge School Committee members to the BayPath School, we extend their apologies for not being here tonight. Mrs. Lenty is singing because it's a good holy Thursday and Mr. Landryman is working at Hanscom Yefors Bay, so he couldn't be with us tonight. We have sent to you under separate cover a line item budget that covered our entire budget. So with your indulgence, what I would do is ask Mr. Yakabuchi to go through the presentation. It's a two-part presentation. One talks about our budget and things that are happening up at BayPath and your assessment. The second piece goes into some detail on the funding formula. And we've done that a number of times. When we get to that particular point, Mr. Nash, you can let us know if you want us to go through the funding formula. We're happy to do so, or if in the interest of time you don't, you have it here. And it's as self-explanatory as it can be considering that it can be a convoluted formula.
Certainly.
Having said that, I'll ask Dean to begin.
Thank you, John. I'd also like to thank you for inviting us here again this year. I'm certainly not going to read everything to you that's in these 31 slides, but I will point out things that I think you do need to know and be aware of. As you're building your budget and as we are, it's important to recognize that they're preliminary estimates. They're based on the Governor's numbers that came out in House One, which was released at the end of January. So as the state budget moves through its budget process through the House and the Senate, any changes there to minimum contributions or state aid could ultimately impact the final assessments. And as you recall, we did, for this current fiscal year, at this time adopt the budget and then in July of 2017, we lowered your assessment to the town based on revised numbers that came out of the result of the state financing its budget. So what does the Governor's budget, or what kind of impact does the Governor's budget have on BayPath? Our Chapter 70 funding has increased $139,131. Our 10-town collective minimum contributions have increased $350,938, meaning our required net school spending has increased by $490,069. The fiscal year 2000 total budget for our assessments is $22,153,854. This represents a 2.87% increase over the current fiscal year. The budget also includes a debt service assessment of $1,611,294. And as we did for this current fiscal year, we are requesting $200,000 above the minimum contribution from our member towns and member assessments total $10,492,635. Our Chapter 70 revenue based on the Governor's budget is $10,463,147. From that, we will lose $193,504 as a school choice assessment. We will be receiving regional transportation busing aid in the amount of $990,549.
And let me jump in for a minute. I saw Ron, your head go back when you saw the school choice assessment.
I did. For that reason, I'm like, why do you have school choice is what I was thinking.
That's a good question. And several years ago, when this started, we had the same question. But as you know, Tantasc were, and most of this is related to Tantasc were junior, I mean senior high, they are a school choice school. And a lot of those kids start even at the elementary school, work their way through the junior high, and when they get to the high school, if they should choose one of Tantasc's Chapter 74 vocational programs, the assessment for school choice does not go to the sending community any longer. It comes to us because we're your Chapter 74 vocational school district. Now, for the most part, the lion's share of students that make up that 193 come from the towns of North Brookfield and Spencer. There are several from the town of Southbridge who the assessment's been coming from the Southbridge Public School, Chapter 70, but if they choose, as I say, a vocational program, then it flips over to us.
The town of Charlton, continuing, the town of Charlton.
I'm sorry. Would you mind if Councilor Steve was asked a question on this slide?
Do we have anybody, would you guys pick up, do we have anybody going to one of the agricultural schools?
No, we would not pick up agricultural schools that close to the sending town.
It doesn't.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not a school choice issue. That's a, right, for agricultural schools, it's a right that they have, so it's a tuition issue, which is a little different.
Thank you.
No, no problem. The town of Charlton has assessed us with a sewer betterment fee, the kind into the sewer, of $30,750. That will continue until 2023. We have also recommended that our school committee use $351,027 from our free cash to reduce assessments to member towns, member assessments, I'm sorry. And we have also recommended that the school committee appropriate $50,000 to continue funding our OPEP trust line. Getting on to our budget, we're excited about the fact that our budget contains no cuts in this day and age and as you're wrestling with your budget, you know exactly what that's like and it's something to be excited about. We believe that we have adequately funded our supply and material accounts for all of our vocational shops. We've included funds for new biology textbooks as well as for some textbook replacement in the other disciplines, just to fill in for lost and damaged books. We've included funds for the purchase of a digital scanner for the dental assisting program. We've included funds for a 10-foot power shear for metal fabrication and funds to purchase equipment for a new program that we're starting in the fall, Information Support Services and Networking Program, which we'll refer to as ISSN. So that'll be a new shop that will be available to students in September. We've included funds to add a full-time equivalent ISSN teacher. There is an offset. As you may recall, last year, we had told you we are phasing out power equipment. Next year will be the last year for power equipment, but we only need one teacher for next year. So we've eliminated one position in power equipment and backfilled the ISSN with that position. We've included funds to provide wage increases for non-union employees. We've also included funds to cover a 4.7% increase in the cost of health insurance premiums.
That increase also does not show that we're changing the benefit structure. So for example, for the first time, we're going to have a $500 co-pay if a person is admitted to the hospital, a $250 co-pay if you have day surgery of some sort like colonoscopy, for example. There'll be a deductible of $100 and $200 on prescription medications and then the co-pays have doubled.
John, why do they see non-union employees but no union employee wages?
We settled all of our union contracts this year.
So there are your salary amounts. That's a separate line to get you in, giving me the answer, right? But the other lines are in your salary lines.
Yes. And the COLA for this year is 2%.
2%.
Okay.
So this is how our budget comes together. Our operational budget, we see the Chapter 70 funding, the reduction of the school choice assessment. Our 10-town collective minimum contributions is $8,161,677. And again, that's a number that is provided to us by the Commonwealth. We're requesting $200,000 above that minimum amount from our 10 towns. We have the $50,000 OPEP transfer and the $351,27 appropriation from free cash to fund the budget, making our total operational budget $19,032,347. Our transportation costs are estimated to be $1,479,463, of which $990,549 will be funded through Chapter 71, leaving $488,914 to be assessed to our member communities. You got a question?
I do. I just wanted to ask what the percentage was of the reimbursement from the state for the regional transportation.
It's about 70%.
Okay.
Or 72?
No, 70 is the, the other thing to note here is that this is the last year of our five-year bus contract. Some of the towns we've been visiting, their school departments, for example, right now the towns of Oxford and Wester put their busing out and the quote came in at a 28% increase. Now, we're hopeful that won't happen to us, but I just wanted to point out that we've had some favorable rates for the last five years and we do need to go out a bit next year.
All right, and the increase for in busing from 18 to 19 is 2.5%. So if we saw 28%, these numbers would look completely different. As we stated earlier, our debt service for principal and interest is $1,611,294. We have the sewer betterment fee assessment of $30,750.
Does that include water too? I mean, do you get, they put in a shoreline and they take it to what's going on there, right, to get to your?
We put a new sewer line in in 2004.
So this is a continued betterment.
So it's a 20-year betterment of $30,750 a year, $600.
Don't you guys run a water line there too?
Exxon will be, we just met with Exxon and they will be starting, we were told last week they'll start construction in the late summer. They're going to also build a pump station for us because obviously we're going to get their water up that hill and we suspect that water will turn on in 2020, at which time you'll see there will be no betterment because Exxon's paying for the betterment, but there will be operational costs. And actually, that's right, we can buy your water from you.
Well, through, John.
Yes. So, but that's slated in 2020, what we were told last week.
Okay.
So our total budget next year for assessment purposes is $22,153,854. We add the school choice assessment back in, making our total operating budget, including school choice, $22,347,358. Foundation enrollment at BayPath, you have our 10 towns. You can see our foundation enrollment is increasing by five students. Southbridge's foundation enrollment is remaining the same at 191 students.
You can see you're number one this year, but I sensed you were going to drop to number two next year. Charlton, you can see the incredible growth they've had this year from 170 to 190.
Does the maximum population rate? Are you maxed at your population?
We're just about maxed in and don't forget, we have to count school choice, so that varies from time to time, but we've been averaging taking 315 freshmen a year. Ultimately, that number of freshmen each year may vary a few based on retention in the other grades.
So to get to that point, we're expecting to take in 315 freshmen in the fall. We allocate seats based on the district's capital population or the original of the capital population. So for next year, Southbridge has been awarded 44 seats, just so that, just so you know to keep you up to date. Currently, we have accepted 45 Southbridge applicants for next fall and there are currently 27 applicants on the waiting list.
And how many we have this year?
50 seniors. Now, just from a historical context, when I took over as Superintendent, we had approximately 260 Southbridge applicants. And part of the reason for that is at that time, there were four towns that historically did not use their seat allocation and that gets divvied up every time because we still do have, this year have a waiting list of 143. But what has happened, especially this year, I believe I only have one, maybe, I have two towns, I think, that haven't used their, maybe just one, Paxton, that haven't used their entire allotment. So that means there are less open seats for the other towns. So that's why, you've got 45 already, so that means you took one of Paxton, the rough of the seats already. But we, from now till June, we will not take any new students, but we will lose, up to 315 we've accepted. We generally lose 30 to 40 to change their mind over the summer and then within the first eight to 12 weeks of coming in, a lot of them don't like it, so they'll leave then
So here is how your assessment comes together. And again, I've given you all 10 towns, but we'll just move through and focus on Southbridge. Your minimum contribution, again, that's a number calculated by the Commonwealth, is $813,159. Of the $200,000 that we're requesting above the minimum, $33,217 would be Southbridge's share. Your share of the $488,914 transportation assessment is $81,202. Your share of the debt service of $1.6 million is $224,264.
What happens if a few towns decided not to give the money above the assessment? How's that work for the whole?
Can we let them go? And also, since we have members in the audience, can we raise a hand? I don't mean to be a stickler, but I want to be fair to everybody.
All right, so let me finish this and then we'll get to your questions. So Southbridge's share of the 224, I'm sorry, of the $1.6 million debt assessment is $224,264. Total assessment being $1156,122. And to your point, Ron, or to your question, I believe.
Well, there's two issues that come up in there, Ron. Number one is the district needs seven of 10 towns to pass the budget and the assessment we request needs to be put on warrants as it is. So in essence, if four towns out of the 10 said, well, no, we're not going to pass your budget, we would then have to go back and just accrue some talking and so forth. Obviously, that's the, the above, the minimum is the only line question there because the rest is either mandated. The second piece, which we have a slide that we'll get to, talks about the fact that the school district at the end of last year was still $700,000 below net school spending. Because up until last year, our appropriation has always been at the minimum. As you know, in Massachusetts, legally anyway, you can't spend above the, above your appropriation. And then we had several years where we were under construction, so there were a lot of areas that we didn't spend money and we'll get to that. So as long, but the issue is if we ever got more than 5%, if we spent less than 95% of the minimum requirement, you would then be penalized by reductions in Chapter 70, but the spending requirement does not get reduced. We'll see a chart on that in a minute.
Southbridge's assessment along with the information for our 10 communities, you can see Southbridge's assessment has increased 4.07%, or $45,169.
Now, if you look at the manager's suggested budget, that number's going to show as an increase of $39,000 and that's because the manager adjusted the $1,110 to the actual number because as Dean said at the outset, we did reduce the appropriation in July last year because we get a little extra money from the state. So your number's correct in your budget at $39,000. The difference is just that you've got 6,000, we didn't factor in that 6,000.
And here, I wanted to show of your increase, you can see the majority of it is coming from a change in your minimum contribution, which increased 4.73% or $36,715. And one of our next slides will show that a little better. So here is your breakdown of your assessment comparing the current fiscal year to next year. And you can see your minimum contribution amount has increased by $36,715. The assessment above minimum has increased by $6,769. Transportation has increased by $529, debt service by $1,172. Your capital improvement assessment actually dropped $16, making your total assessment increase $45,169. So a little bit about our building project. We can't say it enough, the project was completed on time and actually under budget. In this day and age in public construction, we're very proud of that. We anticipate that our final audit will be brought up at the MSBA next month at the Board Meeting.
April 10th.
And we're expecting to get our final payment of $1.7 million, which coupled with what we have left in the building project, will be enough to pay for the temporary borrowing of $3 million that we did. Also excited about that. Last fall, we explained this to you last year, we had to replace a 30,000-gallon underground storage propane tank with a cost of $419,705. That project ran off without a hitch and in fact was finished sooner than the heating season started, which we were extremely excited about since we had a temporary heating system.
And we had to go to the AEGs to take the second bidder as opposed to the lowest bidder because of their capabilities. Luckily we did, or else we wouldn't have that tank done today.
So that project is just about complete. There are some punch, punch list items left to be completed, primarily fence, permanent fencing and some landscaping and that'll be done once the ground thaws and the water breaks a little bit. We are also in the process of building a 32-space parking lot in front of the building, which is estimated to cost $200,000. We will be using existing district funds. We will not be coming back to our towns looking for an assessment or cover that appropriation. Now, John mentioned this a little bit about required net school spending and you hear us talk about required net school spending an awful lot. Since the state started identifying net school spending requirements back in '93, our district, with the exception of the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, has always assessed our member communities the minimum amount. When you don't spend your entire budget, then you've not met net school spending, or in our case, we have not met net school spending. At the end of each year, the state does not wipe the slate clean. They keep the amount that you've spent, that you are under or over, they keep track of it. And you can see that up through this current fiscal year, we have been under net school spending by $701,203. In fact, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. LaFlesh and I both got a letter from the Commonwealth stating that they expected us to make that deficit up this current fiscal year. We explained to the state, our plan was a multi-year plan. We've requested additional funding from the towns this year and next year. We've also put in well over $600,000 of our free cash into the current budget, into next year's budget, in the hopes that by the end of fiscal year 2019, we'll eliminate that $701,000. The state agreed with that plan. But the thing that we find a little misleading, and this is why I put the note on the bottom, if you look at all of the information that's on the state's website about our required net school spending this year, you'll see the number that's on the bottom corner where it says at fiscal year 2018, $18,134,000. But in the state's eyes, our net school spending requirement for this year is actually $18,835,000 because of that $701,000 deficit. And then that brings us to our Chapter 70 formula and certainly any questions you might have on what we presented.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it's a question, but I guess it's a statement. And I love you guys, you know, been around for a while. And the question came up, what happens if the school says, you know, they're not going to pay the extra, whatever. I get that, but I mean, in light of our current situation, which is just incredible, I mean, another $45,000, it's just, it just seems, and when I see, you know, parking lot gray, we all need a nice new one or whatever, it just seems like a red kick.
Well, first of all, of that $45,000, I don't have the number, $36,000 is net school spending.
Right, yeah.
So I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I just.
But again, we have, we have a requirement from the state to get to this required net school spending amount and that's what we're attempting to do.
It's nice that you guys get to add a teacher and you get to add a program.
We're not adding a teacher.
I know, you're a plus, I know. But I mean, I've listened over the years, though you've done a lot.
Absolutely.
And the building project came in under.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just speaking my mind.
That's fine, and I'm just responding that, you know, in terms of, we left a million dollars that we could have spent on that building project, so came in a million under. We were very fortunate relative to interest rates and we blocked in those bonds at 2.5%. So I do understand, listen, I worked in this town 14 years and those 14 years, we were in the same situation relative to funding. It's never easy in Southbridge and it's never easy in a lot of our towns, so I do understand that.
But again, it's not a slight of any sort, it's just people are asking the same questions to us too, in terms of how much do we pay our students and so it's, I have to bring it out to the unit.
Right, in terms of the minimum contribution, okay, the budget is going up, or the assessment of the budget, the assessment is going up $45,000. Of that, $36,715 is mandated by the state, just like they're going to mandate a minimum that you have to spend in local schools, okay? So really, out of that $45,000, there's $6,769 on that, on the increase on the table. Transportation, I have to get your kids there and actually the state is paying 70% of the cost to get your kids there. And the debt service was voted on and is in fact above the, it's a, pro 2.5 debt exclusion, Ron, right? The debt is debt excluded.
I would imagine that. I would imagine it is.
Thank you for the question and comment because I've been getting the same calls, Councilor Clements. I think there's great value with what we have in a resource of BayPath. That's not the question, but I do appreciate the clarity on the increase. Ms. Ryan?
Just, I have a couple things to listen to. Even I'm going off the point, even if we did work on it and got it out somehow, if several of the towns approved the budget the way it is, we still have to pay it, right? So no matter what, there'd be no point in a pointless battle to fight.
And it's a great point.
So in my mind, it's such a minor amount of how you.
And the other issue.
There's no minor amount this year, Jackie.
I know there is, but when it comes to education.
Not any $5,000, $10,000 or anything, no minor amount.
Their budget is extremely, compared to Southbridge's public school budget, it's extremely lean.
The other thing there, remember, is that if the state budget sends us more money, as we have always done, the last year being a prime example, we will reduce the assessment. In other words, our budget is built at $22,130 or something like that. If the funding from the state comes in, we're not going to turn around and say, okay, now we've got $100,000, we're going to keep that. We will reduce assessment.
Right, and not that it's a ton of money.
No, it isn't.
But in fiscal year 2018, we reduced your assessment by $5,302, which is the additional funding we received. We didn't keep it, which we could have. I mean, we have the legal right to keep it, but we've just never done that.
Did you have other questions?
I just, I just come on to continue. Looking at this and looking at past years' budgets, I appreciate how you lean, you two guys do keep your budget. You always are looking for savings, you're always looking for reductions and it doesn't impact a student's education and you've done a really good job of that, so I just want to commend you for another great budget and I'm really impressed.
And I will say that I know BayPath and our organization's fortune. You saw it tonight that the minimum contribution in the Chapter 70 that's already been suggested is about $500,000. That's a good increase. The other issue is we're one building, basically one builder. The other issue is where one building, basically one builder, a district that has five buildings, has five built-in costs that they have to maintain before they get teachers in the dome, okay? So that's another issue. And I do completely respect where you're coming from and agree that, you know, we have not had large cuts. On the other hand, we have, to Jackie's point, for example, during this building construction, we chose to spend a little extra money on energy efficiency matters, so that even though the footprint went from two hundred thousand square feet to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, our energy costs have not gone up. So those kinds of things, we're always looking for. We've started some discussions on solar, we've got some ideas. Couple of things popped up that we'll, we have to clear up. But if that were to come to fruition, that would be, so we're always looking for... And the other thing we didn't talk about is what we try and do for all member towns. I mean, last year in Wethel, we renovated seven thousand square feet of Harvard High School. And the only thing they paid for was the materials. In Oxford this year, we're building a community center on Carbone Pond as opposed to building a private home. And we're going to go back to building a private home next year. But, and I'm not sure if we've done some projects recently for you or... Well, we are, we're doing some maintaining of parks and things like that.
Just a question, have you gone through your buildings yet, or your building, I guess, and changed over to LED lighting and stuff?
Yes, that's what I was referring to.
So you went through the state National Grid program?
No, no, we did that.
We did that.
We did get National Grid assistance, but it was done at the same time we did the building project. So all LED lighting and other, the HVAC system, we've got a brand-new control system on that. We went to variable speed drive motors on all our various HVAC systems. Yeah, in fact, the building was designated lead silver when we did the project.
Anyone else have questions while we're at this crossroad? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. And don't forget, Ron, if there are projects that come up, we have a family-like, one thing which is offered, just the Italian block. And we have your line if the...
We keep wait, well, I've got to be honest, I've been told that there's been a little disconnect in terms of getting a meeting together again, so, because we have approvals to go forward, so...
I don't know where that disconnect is.
Okay, so I'll hit the chief up again and try to get... I know, I keep telling him, I actually have said that to him.
That's what I need to do, if he's having problems.
Because when I talked to you, we had a meeting.
If he's having problems, send me an email.
We're looking to mimic Oxford's at this point. We went and did a great tour last week, and the size, the entire thing, and what they did, it was paying for buck. And if we can get the labor part of it...
All right, we're ready to go when you are.
All right, then.
But have shame...
I know, I know.
John and Dean, thank you so very much for coming to us and for your flexibility and the schedule. We appreciate it. Do we want to submit this to council?
Both recommend that council, I'll make a motion to recommend that council, that council approve the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Bay Path vocational technical high school budget, as submitted this evening.
Do you have a second?
Do you want me to give out the number?
Can we put the number in?
Yeah, you should. One million, one fifty-six, one twenty-two.
Folks, can we please keep it down? We're in the middle of a motion. One million, one fifty-six, one twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay, we had a first and a second on that. Any further discussion about Bay Path? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
It's great to see you.
Seeing you.
And just so everybody knows, I didn't turn around and watch because I actually sat through this with Councilor Steves at their public hearing. It was just as smooth then, you guys did a fantastic presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think that the first student told you that you need to do it first.
I wanted to see my Glazerman and Helen, so it worked. So next, on our agenda is number three, which is review fiscal year two thousand and nineteen library budget and entertain a motion to vote. So we have Margaret Morrissey, the library director, on hand. You don't need to use a projector, which is great. We have our budget books tonight, Margaret.
Oh, great, thank you.
I mean, while we have a quick lull, Martina, would you mind passing that sign and sheet back? Because I know that Steve just showed up and can't... I know, which sent it to the old...
Here, is it hot in there?
Yeah, let's see if the AC's somebody.
Either that or just...
Or open the window, either way.
You get the rails in there. Is there any screens?
Nah, I doubt there's any question.
I'm sorry, just, let's give them one second so that they can wrap them up.
I have been doing that.
I know we all want to keep it...
You're first, you're probably usually last.
No, no, I was actually big happy.
So for anybody interested, the library budget is in section six of our budget binders, if you're following along. Martina, did you have a copy of this in a packet? Okay, because I know that the packets were a little late because we didn't have our budget books, so.
No, it was no problem.
All right, very good. Ms. Morrissey, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to present the Jacob Edwards Library Budget for FY nineteen. As you probably know, we were given some directives by the town manager, and I'll just reiterate what those were. There was no new personnel, which the budget reflects. A two percent labor cost. Three staff on the, three of the staff are still going through the step system. So we have three changes that will be reflected, and this is just the highlight. Water and sewer were two of the utilities that, they were increased by six percent and will be reflected in the budget. Electricity and gas is based on usage over a three-year period. And then I would like you to know that the, there is a change in one of the line items, programs and movie license is an increase of four point five nine, which is reflected in the budget. But other than that, the budget is the same as previous years, other than the ones that I've just mentioned. And please be advised that the trustees fund, the Board of Trustees of the Jacob Edwards Library fund the library to forty thousand dollars every year for books and materials acquisition. And we would not meet our state aid requirements, which is mandatory, if we didn't get that funding. So that's just the package, so that's the overview.
Can we, unless someone wants to go line by line, can we look at classes or sections? Is that adequate? That's what I'd like to do, please.
So under the labor cost, as I mentioned, it was two percent labor increase, so that is reflected in the budget, and just that there are three people still on steps. One of the people that is on step is now going to be maxed out, so next year it'll only be two. The longevity, we have one person added to longevity this year who wasn't in, so that's an increase of four hundred dollars, which represents eleven point seven six. So then we move to utilities. We have been having solar credits and stuff like that, so there are adjustments. So that's why we've gone down to sixteen thousand in, well, from seventeen eighty, eight eighty-two last year to sixteen thousand this year, so it's a decrease of ten, ten point five two. Also, we have had the LED upgrade, which has significantly impacted our budget, which is wonderful. And the natural gas has gone down by like five hundred dollars, so two point six three. Waters and sewer has reflecting a six point, a six percent increase. So, but because based on our previous usage, it's slightly adjusted, so we're at thirteen thousand, seven, eight.
Margaret, may I just point out, so that folks that don't have a copy of this budget are aware, what you've just gone through, especially the line for electricity, you're actually proposing a reduction over last year because of the changes and because of electrical consumption.
Right, in discussion with the town manager and the chief financial officer, we have agreed that we can reduce these costs and still hopefully cover the usage. And I mean, you know, I hope you understand that there's good stewardship inbuilt into this whole budget. And, you know, it's something that's required of us and we take seriously. So, as you probably remember in the past, the repair and maintenance, that line item is always our big line item, and it's still, there's no increase represented in this budget, but just know that that's our big line item, and it's the one that we sometimes, we have, we're always, you know, having repairs and maintenance that we can't even predict. So just know that twenty-three thousand represents something that we can try and quantify as best we can. As mentioned, the movie licensing, that's in the fifty-three hundred account, that has increased slightly based on a vendor increase, to us a direct vendor increase. And then moving on to the next area of service purchases, it's gone down by two point six six, and that is, actually, that's the whole category. That's the whole category, yeah, sorry. So that's why we, that's represented there. And then after that, I believe there were no changes. It's just the same budget as last year. And I just have written and read again, so if I can just repeat. The fifty-five eighty-six account, which is library books and materials, that is funded to forty thousand by the operating budget, but there is a forty thousand supplement from the Board of Trustees at the library in order to allow us to meet our requirement, our state requirement.
Count, please. Okay, I just had a quick question. I know it's only a hundred bucks, but how can, how can you pay a separate web and it's not being covered by the virtual town hall contract?
Why, we have our own website.
Yeah, I was curious, but why wouldn't that be considered part, why wouldn't it be under the virtual town hall contract?
Because we have a line item here, we do our own web service.
I know you do, but...
You know, we use Go Daddy as our network. And we also have, we're part of the CW Mar's network. I guess I don't understand...
I know that, what I'm wondering is why isn't, why aren't all of our town agencies under the same virtual town hall contract?
I think most of Mar, I think she's except, one of the few exceptions of any, right?
Well, I like to think, if I may, that our website is a pretty good website, and it serves the purpose that we have. We have a lot of our other services that appear on it, such as things like programming and stuff like that, that automatically populate once we enter our information in one area.
It's a good website, I'm just wondering why they're not combined.
I think the question he's asking is, when they moved in and they moved into virtual town hall and rebuilt the town website, why wasn't your department included in that?
Yeah.
There must have been some rationale for that, I don't know what it is, but there must have been some rationale.
If it's a hundred dollars a year, I don't...
And what's more, I think your involvement in networking with CW Mar's probably presents some complications that wouldn't be covered under the standard contract of virtual town hall.
Possibly.
That's what I would guess.
I'm sorry, I can't really answer it completely, but I think it's all of the above and some of the other things that I, you know...
I was just...
So, so the requested budget is five hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And as you are aware, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners require us to have municipal acquisition of a certain percentage, and we have to increase each year. So over a three-year period, we have to show a two and a half percent increase. So based on the five hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-eight figure, the Mar going forward for FY nineteen would be five hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine. And that's the minimum that we would be able to, in order to meet the state requirements and get, it's approximately, this year we got twenty-nine thousand from state aid, being a community that is providing services to our colleagues, you know, through interlibrary knowledge, being open fifty hours a week, having professional staff. There's quite a few requirements, which we meet all of them, I'm happy to say, at a hundred percent. And we'd like to continue at that level, because I think that's what pushes the Jacob Edwards Library ahead of the pack. I think we have got a good recognition amongst our colleagues about what we do. And you may also notice that the community in Southbridge has its own profile, and we serve as like a community service as much as just a library. You know, we're moving towards doing a lot of social service work, but also providing a lot of programs and education and recreation, which is our core mission as well. So trying to balance all that, trying to have a staff that can provide those services. I feel that we're very fortunate to be in that position, where I'm really blessed to have the staff that I have and that we can hopefully push the mission of the library forward and help the community as best we can and work in, consult, you know, in cooperation with the schools, the seniors in the community, the LKPTQ community, you know, all the communities that we have. We like to think that we at least attempt to provide services and, you know, with better, maybe a better budget, we could do more, but hopefully we do a good job with what we have. And I think, especially in regards to kids and the focus on STEAM, you know, science, technology, engineering, math and art, it's really important that we can reach the kids and have the programming and the, hopefully the initiatives that kids need. So we're trying on all, on all the segments that we can identify, we're trying to do something and hopefully, you know, better than just something.
Certainly, great. Councilor Steves?
I just wanted to comment, is that I've talked to some of the other librarians at towns I cover, and they often turn to Margaret for ideas.
No, fantastic. Yes, ma'am?
If you don't mind, maybe I'll just ask Margaret just to talk very briefly about some of the, what you use the state aid money for, just so you can kind of explain.
Okay, the, as I say, it's usually around twenty-seven to thirty thousand, but probably more like twenty-nine thousand dollars. It gives us that kind of buffer, where we know that if there's things that happen of catastrophic nature or whatever, that we can maybe hopefully cover those. So like repairs and stuff like that. There's always something that happens during the year. And our generous budget of twenty-three thousand for maintenance of the building and stuff like that is really like just the basic, you know, covering of what happens. And if we are to do anything that improves the building, such as, just recently, we used state aid money to frame with, using the wood from the, the white quarter-stone oak from the American Optical to make a frame. We had Nick Tortus make this frame for us, or the bronze plaque that came from the Mary Ewell School. And it's really handsome, and for anybody who hasn't seen it, I can invite you to come and look, because it really is gorgeous. And it's a, it's a nice place to have all these historical pieces and out on view, not in, behind in a door. We also have done some digitizing at no cost to the town, actually, but other things for state aid. Maybe you can give me a hint card, I'm just trying to think. It's all those sorts of additional things that we can kind of say, oh, yeah, let's do that. And it's really, you know, we just had to buy a projector the other day, because our projector, which we use for all our programs, starts to, you know, has a pink bulb on it, and we've been trying to replace that, and eventually we just realized we needed to do it. So that's the kind of thing, that when we need something, we can, we can turn around and spend our, you know, spend our budget on it judiciously. But it's also money that rolls over every year, which is another factor, which is very powerful. So it can be used towards a project if we have to plan something in the future. And I believe during the time of the construction, that's what happened, is the money was banked for a while so that it could be that money put together.
Councilor Clements?
Okay, so no one's going to want to hear me, but I'm going to make my points. And I love you, Margaret, and I love the library, but it's a bunch of times tough, and we have been asking all year for some potential areas to cut. And while I know the services of the library are crucial to many people, there's also downtime. Our library's open five or six days a week at times, and two nights. Right, and two nights too. And there may come a time, because if somebody asked me whether I was going to cut safety or I was going to cut extracurricular activities, it would be extracurricular activities. And I would consider the library as one of those. While it's, it serves many and you do a great job at it, the reality is, we have a financial crisis in this community, which keeps being told to us and hammered into us the last few weeks especially, even though we've seen it coming for a while. So I'm not satisfied with saying that we should go forward with budgets, certain budgets, without having a plan. And we asked last fall to have some creative ideas, and some of those that were already thrown out were reducing library hours, reducing other services and other things, and not just saying, oh, we'll just, you know, get rid of a fire police and DPDW people or something. And I'm just saying, it's not a slight against the library or anything we do in this community, but the community has to know that they need shoes and pants and a jacket and shirt. They may not need a ribbon and a fancy belt or whatever. They, we might just need what we need, the nuts and bolts of what this community needs. They, we might just need what we need, the, the nuts and bolts of what this community needs. And that may be it for right now. If we can't get our, if we have no other revenues and we can only tax so much, we're going to have to look at places that it's going to hurt to cut. And I'm going to keep saying it, whether it gets done or not, is everybody's choice. And I've never been so strong about it before until this year, because this year it's not good. I don't know why anybody doesn't get that. So you stay within, that's great. It's just this could be an area regardless of how much you try, that for me would be an area that we would cut. That's just my feeling. Sorry.
Well, if I could just point out that as in anything, if you push one way, there's pull in the other direction. And there would be significant consequences for the library in terms of state aid and our, you know, being approved by the Massachusetts Board.
If we don't have the money, it doesn't make, you know, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. Where's the money come from if we don't have money? So state aid is nice, but if we don't have money to even, to, to get to the state aid point, if we can't function.
I think the library is part of the solution. The library is offering services to everybody, both people who are in the community and people who choose to visit the community. We, we are a very flexible staff. We provide all kinds of services, more so, I mean, you might have the idea that it's just like children's program and it's just.
No, I know you do. I know a lot of people who do.
Sorry, I'm trying to.
I'm just saying, we also are a town with a lot of social service agencies and we, that provide much of this, which is one of the reasons we have less taxes, sorry.
And if I may, we are the conduit to those social service agencies. And when we, we work very closely, we're part of the Community Health Network Number Five, the SHNA. We do all kinds of outreach in terms of that to try and forge that relationship in the community. So that people who are not, who are underserved or not served at all are, are assisted. So we're the warm place in the winter and the cool place in the summer. And I mean that both cool in terms of temperature and cool in terms of heat, you know, so.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's closed. I'm suggesting it may be a reduction. That's what I'm saying.
The hardship that that provides, both the staff and the patrons, I, I'm not sure I can even quantify, but I can certainly make an attempt to try and explain that the staffing that we have at the library, I find I am really, I have, just as I said earlier, I'm blessed. And I've made it clear that we've had some situations in the past where we've had a bit of turnover, especially in one, one section of the library. And I'm really glad to say that all that has evened out and it's because people have the number of hours that they have a week, that they like coming to work where they work. And that there's an atmosphere that, that actually supports education and recreation and just learning in general. And any changes to that, I think, is going to really affect the whole dynamic and the balance. I feel we work closely with the schools, we really have tried. And I think what you're asking is for the town side, and especially in this instance, the library, to take it on the, take a hit for something that is kind of out of our control. And we're doing our best to be flexible, to give, be productive. I mean, ROI is a word I know, return on investment, and I may not use it very often. But I'm very aware that we're a business just as much as any, anyone who hangs their shingle out on Main Street. And I'm sorry.
You're passionate, I understand that.
Yeah, I just, I, I didn't, I didn't expect to have to, to justify what.
I'm not asking you to justify, I'm giving you my opinion that that's an area for me personally, along with other areas that, that may need to take a hit. We're talking a community that.
I'm dealing with my staff who are very concerned about this and they have, you know, they've heard all kinds of rumors.
I'm sure they have.
And it's really, it's very difficult for them. And I don't want them to start looking at part-time jobs and other things. I want them to, to, to stay as the library family. And I mean, I know that sounds a little bit kind of patriarchal and stuff like that. That is not my intention. I value the people that I have that work with me and all the kind of good ideas and initiatives, the Victorian Christmas dress that we had this year. That, that was a great initiative. We were the, the envy of other libraries. That's all I can say. And it was an initiative from the staff themselves.
Before we go to you, Counselor Steves, and then to Ms. Ryan, and then to Ms. Shay, I didn't see if you had your pen up for Ms. Ryan. And I, I want the atmosphere to be very clear because I made a statement Monday night to the town manager that we need to be realistic and that we need to examine potential cuts. We don't need to determine them all tonight by any means, so if anyone's on edge for that, please accept our apologies, but we are looking, and I agree with Counselor Clements, these are tough questions that, had she not been here, you might have heard them from me, or comments at the very least. So let's please just make sure that we all understand that we are examining everything as closely as we can because some of us will, you know, will use the political statement that it's an obligation, but realistically, we want to be very, very fair, but very scrutin, we want to scrutinize these budgets very, very closely. Did you want to add to that?
Just one comment, yeah.
Yep.
And honestly, we've been asking to have this discussion for a while. So I, I'm sorry for you if it's, we're having a discussion at this point in time when the numbers are here. But we have talked about this for a number of months now and, and we have not actually been brought any information. So it's here now is you. Now's the time to talk about this and it's not just the library. But you just need to be, you understand, I get that you think you're going to take the hit, but it's not just the library. And I'd rather think that we all got to live in a realistic world in this community than in some, the money's going to come from somewhere. It isn't anymore. It's not coming from the landfill anymore. It's not happening.
And like some of.
And we had cuts in the past. Library was closed in the past. We've had things and we built it up.
Yeah, but when you lose your pay in the scale, it's very hard to catch back up. And you know, you have to do twice as hard. And that's really the thing that is most in front of my mind as well, is that it's really hard to catch up.
And I'm, I'm sorry you feel, I'm sorry this is, you know, affecting you in there, so it's not the intention, it's just the reality of our problems, so.
Thank you for qualifying that. Counselor Steves. Thank you. I just want to say first off, I actually agree completely with both of you. That's kind of the question too. He has you going with the library all the time and eleven bucks. But this is a kind of situation where I'd like to know specifically, if you can tell me, Margaret or Ron or Karen, what would the, what would the actual impact be on the aid you get from the state, the services you can provide and your actual budget? If, for example, we were to have you cut a half debt?
If you could, Margaret, because I'm actually working on that. It's okay, Margaret. So, so we've been looking at that and we're developing a report right now about that issue, not only for the library but for town hall. And, you know, town hall, we, we were discussing, and you'll have that report probably on Monday. If you closed on Friday throughout the year, that would be a reduction of four hours in everybody's pay. And that would be essentially clerical workers because salary workers, you can't reduce their pay according to state law. The library is a little bit unique in that though, because they only open for four hours for part of the year. During the summer, they open on Saturdays for some time period, not for the full year.
Yeah.
So I have that calculation in dollars for you guys that you'll have by Monday. It's a calculation of, of what it would be, because we're trying to impact the library by the same way we impact the town hall to be consistent, right? So reduction of, the way we're doing is a reduction of four hours throughout the year period of time, which is about a ten point six, seven percent reduction in the pay of each employee. Now, there's a lot of concerns with that, Gus, and, and a number of the concerns that we, as we've developed in this, this is a pretty deep, complicated issue. But because state law and you can't reduce salary employees, for instance, Margaret would not take any cut to her pay, but the clerical workers would to the tune of about ten point six, seven percent. That's a significant impact on their pay for four hours, right? And, and the problem with that, truthfully, there's a lot of concerns about that. One is it, what it would do to the, the lowest level employees in the town who lost that service. The loss of the library service on Saturday itself, then the impact on morale based upon managers would keep their pay and, and the clerical people would lose their money.
I know.
Which is bad. And frankly, what Margaret said, I think, is, is a big point. How do we keep our employees? If all of a sudden we're cutting them out four hours a week, we're really impacting their salaries. And there's a good chance we would lose employees. Even more so concerning of that is what would be the impact on all the clerical workers? They are not unionized, as you recall, as you know. What would be their impact if we did this to them when all of a sudden we're cutting all clerical pay by four hours and, and that much of their ten point six, seven percent of the pay? So the more we look at that, we realize there's some real negative impacts to do what we're suggesting. But it is a fair question to look at and we're going to provide you that information, but it's not, it's not so easy as it, you know, we can save some money by cutting four hours.
My intention was never four hours.
What's that?
My intention was not.
Well, you may want to go more or less. I don't know what your intentions are, but again, I mean, everybody has their different thoughts and I can't adjust that. But I'm trying to give you something, if I give you four hours, you can multiply that by two and get to eight hours if that's what you want to do. But, but you, I'm just trying to explain to you, here's the four hours, what the impact would be, then you can multiply it out any way you want.
I know, I just, just need to see it. I don't like the idea either.
Right.
And also to go back to, to more specifically to Margaret, you mentioned that, that it would have an impact on the state aid you get from the library board. Do you have an idea of what that would be? How, I mean, do they, do you have a rough idea of what kind of impact that would have?
As I say.
Because I, I can see that as being kind of a spiral.
Right, because we're required to be open two evenings a week and one Saturday for our size library, fifty hours a week during September to May. That's the requirement. So if we would, our state aid would be cut, but then in the next year, with, you know, it's a three-year average, and you probably have to help me here, Karen, but it's a three-year average. So if we don't meet our, our requirements in year one, you know, we'll have to do twice as hard, we'll have to add more money to year two to catch up or whatever, and then it kind of spirals. Can you explain that?
I get that, I get that. It makes sense.
Yeah, so, sorry, I'm clumsy about that, but that's, that's the issue. And the thing is that all departments have to be cut in the same way if that is the case. And, you know, frankly, I just, if I can, just on an opinion, I just find it, you know, abhorrent to think that my staff would take a cut and that I wouldn't be taking a cut. I just, I would have just learned of that this afternoon, that there's, that, that there's a law on that, that, that just, just doesn't make sense, especially as I'm the higher salary person with probably the most worry, but that's not, that's not what, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's, you, you just pitch people against each other and it makes for an untenable working environment, which I do not want. And I unfortunately don't have that right now and I'm hoping that we don't get into that kind of situation. And I can't tell you enough about putting a team together and how when you have the team, the well-oiled machine working together, where you can go, you know, it's like, oh, the places you go, you know, like St. Joseph's. I just, I recognize the issues and I'm not being glib, but I just want you to understand that the library may seem like the fluff or it may.
Definitely not fluff, Margaret.
Or whatever. But believe me, I feel really terrible that this is a possibility and that my staff are worried about their futures. And that some of them will have to make choices which are not their choice in reality, but the situation is forcing them into it. And it just makes me feel like a schmuck.
I think everybody, everybody is under the same.
Can we move on, move on to the next question, please?
I just, I wanted to, I, I'm looking at this, I know you said you have to have a three-year average of two and a half. So being at two, you're already going below what your three-year average is supposed to be, so that's already going to make it hard for next year, right? So it's already going to start spiraling because it's lower than the two and a half this year. And maybe it's because I use the library on Saturdays, because I go there once, at least, at least once a month, because I have my meetings there, because the recreation center can't do it anymore. So I have my meetings there and I, I see this having really that big impact if we start cutting. And I, I understand where Denise is coming from and we're going to have to look at all budgets, including safety, and I know that's not going to be popular, but safety has to, because that's a huge portion of our money too. And that's going to have to take a hard look too. So I understand what you're saying and I'm totally sympathetic because I know a small cut from our side will end up harming your state aid by a lot. And that's, if that sucks, it's a really horrible situation. We're going to have to, I mean, this is the first time I'm really seeing this, but it looks like you're already working with your BAN middle, as most of the town departments have for the last four years.
Yeah.
So I know it's going to be hard, but I, I'm sympathetic, I, I guess I'm like Gus, I'm sympathetic to both sides here and I understand their harsh reality. I, I guess for me, I'm not seeing much I could see justifying cutting here and it, I'm of the opinion that cutting hours for clerical workers is not something I would like to do. I know, so I'm the lowest, one of the lower paid at where I work and I would hate to see my hours cut as a lower paid, because I'm an hour-by-hour worker too. And that sucks. And my work's talking about that too, so it's, it sucks. So.
We're cutting this one.
This is a horrible situation, but I, I would, I guess I would tend to side with Margaret on, I don't think there's much more left to cut here. And with everything, I, I, I just, I'm not seeing where we could cut that would not have significant impact on services and impact on the community and make it really hard in the future to get back to being such a great library as we are now in the region. So I, I just, I can't find anything.
All set. Before we move on to Ms. Shay, if anybody wants to take a look at this, you're welcome to come take a peek at my budget book or I'm sure Counselor Steve or someone can let you look on. I've been through this several times since Monday night, but Ms. Shay.
I didn't want you to forget me.
I won't.
Sit over me once already. My passion is children reading. You know that, you've heard me stand up on TV and talk about it. This is crisis level. There is no school library at Eastford Road. Charlton Street and West Street have switched to a STEM teacher who, in their spare time, allows students to take books out. We have basically no library services in our elementary school from kindergarten, or really from preschool through the sixth grade. And now you're going to cut library hours? Literacy is the most important thing we can do for our community. If we do not educate our children, if we do not make them literate citizens, we will never attract a business to come to Southbridge, ever.
True. Thank you for your statement. Before I get to you. Mr. Marketti, thank you for your patience.
Oh, okay. Well, I haven't really seen her budget, but just sitting back here, I would just say, we really don't want to cut people's hours, we don't want to wait people off. And I was just thinking, maybe there was some, without seeing her budget, maybe there was some other way she could look at cutting some programming or doing something to try and keep, because we don't, we really don't want to wait people off. I've never had a good, cutting people's hours or waiting people off. So that's all I wanted to say. There's some other areas she could look at, that she might be able to make some cuts, just small cuts. Maybe if you don't let people use that down there, start charging fees, something, something like that, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out.
Thank you for your point. Counselor Clements, thank you.
So the other opportunity that could be in front of us, and you've lived through this before, Margaret, too, when, when Chris Clark was here, wage freeze. You know, we don't take our two percents or we don't get our two percent, so I guess we've given that up. Not just you, I'm talking everybody. You know, well, with the exception, obviously, of your union issues, that's, that's in general, as far as the safety factors go. But that's something that I think we need to seriously consider because we've done it before, including our arrangement. Everybody was on a freeze for a while. And if we're worried about the impact of reducing days, maybe we should be looking at the overall impact of what that two percent, automatic two percent, that isn't really automatic, but we tend to do it anyway, could be. Because a lot of companies have had to do that in the past, as we've said, we talked about that years ago when we did it. And then we managed to get back into the swing and give everybody their raises. But we're at that point again where we have to consider that too. So I'm putting that out there and asking for numbers on that as well.
Yeah.
Because that's something that we need to look at seriously.
Just to understand what I'm being asked to get, right? You're talking about just the two percent for the non-union people?
Two percent for anybody who is expecting two percent this year with, yeah, because the contracts, we cannot, we cannot do.
So, so let me just be clear here, because to me that seemed, would seem very unfair, because all of.
It always was, it always is.
Okay, and, and it is, but keep in mind.
I'm still asking for the number of what happens if we don't increase wages two percent this year.
Just for non-union.
Legitimate question because we've done it before.
Yeah, we're happy to provide that. I'm just going to make it clear from my point of view, to give every other union employee raises and have just the non-union people not get raises, is going to have a very negative impact for the point where I think our non-union plays with that a lot of unionize.
We've been through this before. The sky didn't fall, just a little wasn't around. We've been through this before, I'm asking for the numbers. I would ask for the numbers, but we did ask for it actually. I've been asking. Now we're talking about it, it's budget time, I'm going to keep asking for stuff that we didn't, so I'm asking.
Thank you. Can we move on to the next point? Do you have another question? Follow-up on that, just a quick second. Is there any way you can actually get the numbers of what it would look like if we were somehow to be able to include the unions?
Sometimes they defer their raises, sometimes the unions are willing to do that, you can't say no.
Sit down and talk to them and they, and also they realize what kind of financial shape we're in right now.
Lose jobs or.
We'd much rather keep, keep people at a lower pay rate than.
If we tell them we're losing jobs or if they're just going to defer their, or reduce their to a two and a half or whatever it is. It's not that you can't do it, you just have to do the work for it.
Yeah.
If we can take a look at it. Just to respond, the answer is that giving you those numbers is not hard. Karen can work on those numbers pretty quickly. Karen can work on those numbers pretty quickly. The union, she's got enough work to do, but, but she's got, putting the two percent together for all the union employees is pretty clear, pretty easy. There's all steps and things like that that would be more complicated, but the two percent is not hard to put together. You're correct, and that would all have to be negotiated for each union, you have to bring them in, you have to try to negotiate that. And, and I'm just saying that it's possible to try to negotiate that. Hard to do unless you're literally serious about doing layoffs, and is a result of that, because it, obviously, would probably go to arbitration and be complicated here in Massachusetts. I think we all know what arbitration is like. But is it possible? Yes. Is it likely, given Massachusetts and Massachusetts Labor Law and arbitration, it would be very, very difficult. We would have to demonstrate something that Denise is talking about, you have to demonstrate why the town was in such a crisis, such a financial crisis, that you could prove to them that this was something you had no choice but to do.
Thank you for that. I, I think that it's a very fair question, though, to ask for you to present that information. At least let us look at the information. That's, that's really what I was asking for Monday night and what we're asking for tonight. Any other questions of the library, about the library budget for Mrs. Morrissey? Do we want to look at the motion and include a number? You don't want to?
I don't know, I mean, I, I just don't, we're, having gone through, this is the first year I've ever felt that weird, I'm not quite sure what to do with the budget.
Go ahead, Counselor Steve.
I was curious if, if we're, if we're still waiting for numbers, maybe we should, maybe we should defer actually voting on this right now? Get, get, get the presentations, and then come back and, and come back and vote them?
I don't have a problem with that, it's just...
It's up to you, you're the chairman, but...
No, I'm glad to have other councilors here, three of us, I think, right?
I don't think we've done that, we haven't done that in any town I've been in the council.
But we're short of the committee tonight anyhow, I don't know, I can't speak for Councilor Morales, or for Mr. Daniel, who had an emergency if I didn't announce that earlier, so I have no problem postponing. We are early in the budget season, I think everyone knows, I tried to get this moving really quickly, so, Mrs. Morrissey, if you won't read too much into that, I don't have a problem not having a motion on this tonight whatsoever.
And I would foresee this happening with others, not with you. We're not, you just have to, you have to spell next, so...
So we will have no motion? Ms. Shea, Ms. Shea, do you want to make a motion? No?
I would move that we accept her budget.
All right, just for motion purposes, that amount is five hundred twenty, six thousand five forty-eight.
Okay, I would move that we, we send that number to the town council for approval.
And will we have a second? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion that we just postpone recommending this amount to the council, the requested amount to the council till the next meeting.
Okay, would you like to second that?
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just ask a question overall? You know, we have budget meetings, we have two next week, we're gonna have a couple the week after, this is gonna be the same situation. I think we need to come up with a plan of what we're gonna do overall first, and then come back with these budgets.
Well, I can appreciate that we've been asking for a financial plan, as Counselor Clemens has said, since we established goals and objectives. And we have plenty of people here who are willing to discuss the budgets, not that I disagree with you.
No, no, I'm just asking, so that I understand, you know, what would be the most efficient way to do this at this point.
Mr. Town Manager?
So, so let me be clear, you have a financial plan, it's called the town budget. The budget is before you with all the recommendations.
Goal and objective number two calls for two-year financial planning cuts and...
And you're gonna get those things, right? But, but right now, the, you've asked me to present the 2019 fiscal year budget, and the budget is a reflection of meeting with all the department heads and developing a plan that we believe is responsible to the people of Southbridge, both in terms of the taxes and in terms of services, and I presented that, that budget too. We are currently working on some potential cuts that the town council could make, because as you know, the town council gets to make the final decision as to what the budget's going to look like, and we're gonna provide that, you will have that by Monday. But that's not, that's not a different budget, that's just a bit, okay, if you want to eliminate a fireman, what could you save? If you want to close the town hall, what could you save? We're giving you some suggestions as to things you can do. But it's not like we're gonna be able to go and renegotiate all the union contracts this week and get you new numbers on your contracts, that's not going to happen. So, understand that, you know, you're gonna get some suggestions of potential cuts, but the budget that, that before you is the document that is being recommended, and there's a lot of cuts that happened to get us to the point we are. There's, it's not like this budget doesn't reflect all the cuts that you guys are asking me for, this is exactly what we've done in our budget process, is to cut things. We, there was a lot of things added to this budget that we just didn't have the money for, and we cut. So I'm, you know, again, I'm gonna give you some ideas as to things you guys can do if you choose to, and, and we can give you the cost of what the union contracts are, but there's no way that can be renegotiated in this budget season where it's gonna, you can reflect some cut from other labor unions, it's never gonna happen.
So based on what we discussed on, more a statement for me, what we discussed on Monday night, and I'll speak for myself since I made the statement, knowing full well that looking at your budget options with increases to the school district, I guess I would have entertained a request to postpone this meeting, when I think that it was pretty clear that we were gonna be looking for some alternatives. So I think it's a little late. I would like to continue with these presentations tonight, despite the fact that we only have three of the eight councilors here, which again disappoints me to no end. And I'm sorry, I have to be clear about that, because we can't have that during budget season.
I agree.
I understand and I respect your point, but I would like to continue, and without objecting, without objection, I'd like to do that. But first, Counselor Clemens, you had something.
Thank you. I want to make it really clear to everybody present here, no time, way, shape, or form, at least that I can recall, unless it was done in a meeting I wasn't at, and I'm at most of the meetings, did we ever say, cut ten percent, or five percent, or twenty percent? This council, I'm speaking for them now, because I did not hear a majority, nor did they come to their chair and ask to do this, ever say, cut this amount. We are concerned with the overall budget because of what we continue to be told, and when the school comes and asks us for money as well, and we're given three proposals, you know, we're given a zero, a one, a one and a half, a two, or whatever, and we're told, the only way to fund all that basically is to tax the people again, which is fine, you know, hey, some, some people can afford more taxes, I don't, and maybe that's what we all gonna do, is put in and put more taxes, I get that. But we also answer to them, so if we're gonna, if this budget isn't, I, I disagree respectfully with the manager saying, well, this is the budget, this is what it's gonna be, but we're gonna tell you if you cut a fireman, or policeman, or this, or that, this one, then that means that's gonna change, so this budget isn't gonna be what it is. So to recommend a number when we're not quite sure if we are gonna cut a fireman, or policeman, or two DBW men, or whatever it is, or clerical staff, or somebody here in the town hall, or, or anything, or a department in general, don't, don't sit and say, this is the budget, this might be what you've just given us, but as Counselor Nash has pointed out, we ask to have these discussions and to have some considerations, some thoughts, even if we weren't gonna ever use them, we asked for some work to get done, and we didn't get it. So now we're having this conversation again. We kinda had a little last year when things didn't get done, and, and well, here it was, here's the budget, just do it. You know what? You can't just settle and just do it all the time, sometimes, your budget is lean, Margaret, it's not about your budget, you just happen to be the first one up. And your budget is lean, we don't disagree, the services are great, the, there's not, it's, it makes sense. But what can we do as a whole community? How are we all gonna take the hit? Where are we gonna take the hit? Is it gonna be in safety and services? Is it gonna be in, I don't know. Is, you know, opioid crisis here, and, and, and roads and services there, I don't know. But we have to at least question it, and we have not questioned it. Shame on us as a council, we have not questioned our new diligence and financial side of things to question it now. We're questioning it tonight, we're questioning it tomorrow night, or whenever it is, the next one, I don't know, next week.
I think if I can just respond on that, is that, that sort of the homework isn't shown here, so to speak. We had those conversations behind closed doors, and I mightn't have left the manager's office very happy, you know, when we had those, but I understood the situation. And, you know, it's, you know, I know what we can't do because of what we, what we're dealing with, you know, clutch, clutch your club on the manager.
And you may be, it may stay like this, we don't know.
And we did have those conversations, and I did go to the manager and to Karen with a different, a different budget, and, you know, I was told.
But you were told, you weren't told by us, I just want you to know that, and I wanted to be clear for every present, that we did not say, cut ten percent off the budget, that's not what happened.
Right, no, but I mean, there was an understanding.
Yeah, because I have heard this conversation, and I'm tired of hearing that.
Yeah, no, but I think there was an understanding that, you know, we needed to, you know, really work with as lean a budget as we could, and I think we've come to that, you're not seeing what, what it took to get to this point. And, you know, January, February were raised.
More, more things keep propping us to us, propping up to us as a council market that are gonna cost even more going forward, that maybe you're not aware of, that people aren't aware, we are aware of things too, that, you know, and, and I just wanna make, you know, there's numbers, there's money involved, and we just have to look at everything, everything.
Thank you, and absolutely, I'm perfectly clear, I think, I think the audience and participants are as well. Again, these are difficult conversations, we all know this, it's not personal, it's business, is what we have to do, and I'm glad that we're doing it tonight, early in the budget season, so we have time to respond and react. I look at this as being proactive. At this stage of the game, we have a motion on the table to postpone, as well as a second. Is there any other further discussion of the motion on the table to postpone the library budget? Okay, all in favor of both postponing? Margaret, thank you.
Thank you very much.
For a lean budget and for a great presentation, as you know every year.
Thanks for explaining things as clearly as you can.
Mr. Trombley will be up next for Veterans Community Center, and then with Steve for Recreation. So item number four is review fiscal year 2019 Veterans Community Center Recreation budgets. And Mr. Trombley is the director of the Community Center, our veterans agent. And Mr. Roentzelt is here, and let me just remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded by the camera over in the corner of the room, and I do apologize if I didn't state that earlier on. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Trombley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I come forward tonight with the veterans, veteran services communities, Community Center, COA combination budget for 2019. Are we gonna do it by sections like you did?
Section.
Salaries and wages, the only change that I, there's a couple changes. One, one is obviously the two percent for my, my personal salary. There was a two percent increase in Graves Registration Officer. Longevity remained the same, so that total was eighty-three, three ninety-eight. That's a one point nine, point five percent. Purchases of services, let's see, electricity has been dropped by five hundred, five hundred dollars. Water sewer was dropped by six hundred dollars.
Sorry, excuse me, Mike?
Yeah?
You said water and sewer dropped, it looks like it was the same for this last year, fifty-five hundred dollars.
Wrong line.
What's the electricity?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was reading electricity, thank you.
Water sewer was twenty-eight hundred dollars last year, this year it's down to twenty-two hundred dollars. Repair and maintenance, keep in mind, when we talk about this budget, one thing that was not announced when I began is, this budget reflects on the cost of keeping up the RMB building, which is the former senior center. So the six thousand dollars for repair and maintenance has been dropped down to forty-five hundred dollars. Purchased services, professional, that's internet services, cable, cable access, that has been increased by one hundred dollars for nine point zero nine percent increase, no control over that. And that ends up at thirteen thousand four hundred dollars for purchased services. Supplies, office supplies, there was an increase of two hundred dollars in office supplies, and the reason for that was for the new position that was brought into the senior center about a year and a half ago, program coordinator, who more or less oversees the, the senior center on a day-to-day basis. Incidentally, no cost to the town as far as salaries, she's paid for by a formula grant. Let's see, various supplies remain the same as last, maintenance and improvements in buildings remain the same, twenty-seven hundred, and janitorial supplies remain the same for one thousand, which is a total of forty-four hundred dollars for supplies. Other charges, fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars for mileage and state travel, that's for both myself, as well as the program coordinator. Let's see, conference and meetings and reimbursements, three hundred dollars, that remain the same, and dues and subscriptions remain the same at two, two hundred dollars, for grand total of one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Any questions about the veterans' budget? One hundred, one thousand, eight forty-eight, if you'd like to take a peek, use my book.
Okay, if I could just point out for anyone who might not have a budget book, that's actually a reduction of point two zero percent.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Of course. Counselor Steve?
I'm just, good question, I noticed there was, been no money spent so far in state travel and conference meetings.
That's correct, I have not, I, I did travel to a conference in October, and haven't turned in my mouse slip yet. Shame on me.
Actually, you don't have to.
I'm trying to be a nice guy.
I think the statute of limitations says. Yeah, by the first of November.
Right.
Any other questions about the veterans' budget total of one hundred, one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars? Any line items or sections or questions to Mr. Trombley?
I don't think there's much you can do with that, it's what it is.
Keeping in mind, Community Center is open Monday through Sunday, from eight AM to approximately ten PM at night. Official hours are eight AM to four PM, Monday through Friday, but there's a whole bunch of good stuff going on after hours.
Right on.
Very busy building.
Yes, sir. Do we want to make a motion to submit this one to council?
I'll make a motion to recommend the veterans' budget of one hundred and one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And again, we do have the amount in the motion. It's in there, thank you for doing that, Counselor Clemens. Counselor Steve, yes, sir.
I'm gonna ask you the same question that we asked Margaret earlier. If we were to figure out a way, if, if we were to close, close you one day or another, how much of an impact would that have?
Well, I'm not sure too many people in this room were here, or maybe they were. The town of South has tried this once before when we were in the old buildings, as a matter of fact, we shut down on Fridays. And it lasted a little less than six months, and the town reversed it because it really didn't save anything.
Okay.
Because I think what happened was, they found that lowering the heat on a Thursday evening, for instance, in winter months, lowering the heat on a, on a Thursday evening at five o'clock, or five-thirty, whatever it was, and then not, not keeping the heat running at a, you know, sixty-eight degree temperature level, and then boosting it back up on Monday to bring everybody back in, in the building, was, there was no cost savings, it cost more to boost the heat back up. Shutting the lights off Thursday afternoon at five-thirty, and putting all the lights back on on, on Monday, didn't show cost savings, so I think the town just abolished it, it just didn't work.
Do you want to follow up?
Actually, I do, because you mentioned something I hadn't thought of, not specifically to your program necessarily, but maybe, is there any way we can take a look at what kind of cost savings we might have if we actually took all of our town buildings and turned the heat down?
Turned the heat down? I don't know how you do that, turn it down to what, what you're saying?
I don't, I don't know what it currently runs down.
You come up with it, yeah, well, the veterans' room is always so horrible.
If you take, turn it down, turn it down to sixty-five or sixty.
They wear a sweater. Yeah, it's still...
This is how a system can do it.
To that point, you're gonna have to talk to the Department of Labor and the EPA, because they have standards for workplace environment, so you would have to make sure that you, at that, you're not gonna turn the time to savings.
Our house is... It'll be tough. I, I think it's an interesting question, it's gonna take research, no matter what we do tonight. Karen, did you have a hand up? Did you want to say something?
No, I guess I didn't understand, maybe that Counselor Steve, so he means all the time, have it set low, we're not necessarily going low on like Friday night and...
See what, see what kind of savings we would have if we did that. I mean, I think that might be a way to, to actually protect people's jobs and still save some money. Have, encourage, strongly encourage, put a sign on the door saying, wear a sweater, this is New England. And besides, I mean, besides, it's gonna warm, it's gonna start warming up in the near future anyway.
Yeah, it's air conditioning.
And the AC, consider the air, AC as well, look at, look at...
Yeah, too many times they put it on.
Less, you know, a less...
I think it goes to a much bigger issue than the actual motion on the floor right now. So, thank you for the thought.
It does, but I was thinking about that.
We can address it another time, though, I think.
Can I make one more quick point? For the community center in general, it'd be almost impossible to do that because we have so much retail rental on that building. Now, if the town, council or the town decided to shut the building down, operate the building in my area of business four days a week, that's okay. But, the building is under rental fees, which I turn over $15,000, $16,000 a year in rental fees. We wouldn't want to shut the building down and lose all that revenue, now would we?
Thank you.
So, it's a point to...
Right. Counselor Clemens?
And we've asked this before, and have we reviewed rental fees again in compares? I know we're usually pretty much the leanest out there. Have we looked at that in terms of other communities again? I know we're at work in excess of usage.
We're actually applauded by most other communities because we're probably the lowest rate around.
Right. So, maybe in the upcoming year, you could look at the, maybe, you know, if we're that much lower, you know, five or 10 bucks or whatever it is, you know, but money's money, so.
I understand, but remember, that money goes into a revolving account, and I don't believe it has any direct impact on budget, does it?
Well, if I can, we have, when you've had some things like equipment you need to replace over there, or if there's something with the heat we need to replace, it's on a larger scale. We do use that money for those type of purposes.
You should.
I mean, it's not dinner money.
No.
It's going to be used for something the town needs.
No, 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 but I mean, it's not here. You know what I'm saying?
No, right, but it is here, because if you need something and you don't have it there, it comes from here.
I'm sorry. You have a point.
I mean, it's...
Well, that's why I lean to the person in those building.
Right, right. I'm just saying, I know that there was a time when people were destroying the building, they were wearing the doors, different types of things.
That's long before I took it over.
No, but do you remember? Yes, do you remember? No, 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 you've been around. There were issues happening when the softball kids and stuff, not on purpose balls happened, but we weren't getting enough fees to compensate for the mess.
We had had some damages, and now we've learned our lessons, and we know how to recoup the money, and the organizations are responsible for all damages that are created. So...
Right, I knew you'd take this.
We have not lost any money, the town, and I say "we," for any damages in the last six, seven years, because the damages have been paid for by the organizations using the facility because they signed.
That's good, right. And I just remember that was an issue a while, a little while back, not that long ago. And so, I would just encourage that we are not a charity. We are a business.
Correct.
And while we can still stay low, you know, we don't want to just give it away either. So, just keep that in mind. I request that you just keep it in mind.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion, or can we vote on the motion? Any other discussion? All right. So, we have a motion and a second to submit the budget for the veterans. Department of $101,848 to council. All in favor? Manus, thank you. Thank you for covering veterans, Mr. Trombley. If you want to move on.
The next budget that I am responsible for, Chair, with the Recreation Director's Recreation Budget, and I'll lean to Steve to go over this because this was partially written by Steve as well as myself. So, Steve, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem. So, as you'll see, an increase in salary, that's the 2% increase. Purchase of services, no increase. Supplies, again, I'm going over just general sections, no increase. Mileage on in-state travel, no increase. Total budget of $42,216 reflected in an increase of 1.52% in that same salary.
This was short and sweet, of course, just a page and a half. Does anyone have any questions about the recreation budget as presented? Ms. Ryan?
I don't have a question, much to comment. I'm looking at this quickly. I thank you for really working with the town manager director to try to keep it in the... You're always being under 2% is really great. And I know how hard work you do, Steve, for the Recreation Department. You do a full-time job and a part-time work, and I really appreciate the work you do. So, I thank you for all the work you put into this, and it's the bare minimum for the department, and I don't see much that could be taken out here, so, thank you.
Counselor Clemens?
Yeah, sure. Let me be the meanie here as usual. So, Rec Department, another one of those areas that I have watched increase since I started nine years ago. We, originally, there was just a summer program. We've missed the best year who ran it, and it was this very small budget for that, 10, 15 grand or something like that. It ran just the week hours. There really wasn't much else going on. Cops and kids were picking up some of the yearly different events, a little basketball in the different schools, and things happening at the community center, and then, of course, their summer program. Since then, we watched when Walter Byrd came in on a 15-hour-a-week position at a lower salary, or hourly. There was a Rec Committee, and they got the ball rolling and doing things, but it's always hard to keep volunteers, although Lefty and... She died. Jackie. I was a Jen, I had a J in my head, it wasn't coming. I'm sorry, Jackie, they're fantastic people, of course. I'm not sure how much Lefty's involved in now, but anyway, and there were many others. Suffice it to say, I just look at Rec Committee at this point, if down the road, you know, we are having issues budget-wise. Rec Services, which is one of those things, it's wild for the youth in general, and we have a great building. The building will always remain open, it'll always rent it. Will we be able to provide the programming for the youth? I don't know that we can. I'm not saying that's what I want to see happen. I'm just saying that that could be one of those areas. As we were talking with Margaret in the library, I certainly see this as one of those areas that, funding-wise, in the future, is unstable. The Cops and Kids Program does run in the summer. This community has many, many opportunities. The children, the lower-income children have many opportunities, from scholarships through the Y, huge scholarship program through the YMCA Day Camps and programs there. Most families, many, many families are eligible for reduced or free memberships there. And so, if we should have to cut something, that could be another area we have to cut. That's my opinion.
Okay. So, just to be clear, you know, your statement is that if we need to look at cuts, you would look at recreation?
I would look at it.
In the same vein as you would library?
Yeah. Because, again, it's something that you want, but it's not necessarily the need.
Okay. I think Counselor Steve's...
Some will disagree with that. I would very fair understand that.
And then Martina also had something too, I think, before me as well.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, Jackie?
No, Martina was before me.
I'll put mine up on Lendables.
She was before me to be fair.
Maintenance and improvement of building, what building are we talking about?
So, that's kind of a broad category. We have parks. It's mostly park facilities, and then we have small buildings attached to those.
Okay, so, we'd have to maintain them anyway, because we can't let them fall apart, whether anybody's watching, whether... I'm just talking about what we could cut out, and if, you know, we can't, we can't just let the grass grow. So, some of this stuff is built...
This is a pretty slim line item for what we have in facilities.
Just what I was trying to ask is that if we cut the entire Rec budget, with the exception of the summer program, some of these things I'm looking at, like electricity, are things that... We're lighting something.
I can answer some of that.
Yeah, okay.
Because I handle all the invoices. I pay electricity bills for nine different telephone poles throughout recreational areas throughout the town.
Okay.
Okay. Getting back to building and maintenance, the old rez on High Street?
Yeah, I saw the algae and stuff.
But that building, that is a building that would fall under building and maintenance.
Okay. So, a lot of this is stuff we have to do.
Yes, to answer your question, so, other than salaries and program services, in terms of the supplies, obviously, the, kind of like, some of the miscellaneous supplies, but the things like electricity, natural gas, that would have to be absorbed in some other department. So, whether that's to be...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that, you know, that if we had axed this whole budget, a lot of these things would go someplace else. Because you've been talking about, that it's, the costs have been rising, but I mean, some of these...
Right, the general, the cost of the increasing of the professional, of the professional services.
Yeah, that would be the only...
And what we've done. Yeah, that's the only... I'm just saying, I'm just saying. We're looking at places we have to cut. I've got to cut a department, at least not a D W worker. We might have to cut a librarian, we might have to cut Rec people, we might have to cut secretary time in half, we might have to cut something. We should not say we're not cutting things, because we keep being told we're cutting things, so.
It's a clear message.
It was right in the paper, and he said it on TV. We've got to cut this one, and this one, and this one. Well, no, I'm saying maybe we would have cut two of these instead of one of those. That's all. I'm looking at, you know, ostrich eggs and chicken eggs, so, I don't know.
Okay. Ms. Ryan, I don't want to sound like I'm adversarial, because that's not the point here. But, for this, I have to say...
Windows go on close.
I cannot in my mind justify any cuts in this region, because the added value we get from this budget, from the minimal, the very minimal we're putting in here, what we get as a result, far outweighs the money we're putting in. The impact to the students, the kids, to the community as a whole, is profound. And I've heard all the great things, the improvements that have been made since these programs have been added, and I can't... The added value that this adds to our community, the morale, the sense of community this adds, far outweighs the $42,000 we put into this. So, I would disagree. This is not one area I would look at cutting.
Done?
Yes.
Good. Thank you for that, Counselor Steve.
Two quick questions. One is, can you clarify what the program services line goes to?
Yes, I can. So, program services is a line item that often in the Recreation Department, we have community members who generate ideas about programs to start and things like that. So, this line item is to serve those needs. So, for example, when we have expenditures around things like the all-in program, which is a partnership between the school, recreation, and the YMCA, that line item is where the funds come from to run those, that type of program.
Okay. And obviously, I can understand why you would need to do algae treatment at the rez, but if we have to cut things, is that absolutely necessary to have?
I mean, if you're trimming the fat, like, yes, you could, you could do that, you know, with the current atmospheric climate, you know, we're struggling to keep ice on the rez in general. The reason we have that aquatic services is basically so the weeds don't grow up and cause harm to ice forming. So, obviously, if that, if the rez has plants that exceed the water level of the surface, then you're not going to be able to have ice skating at the rez.
And how much ice skating do we actually have up there?
So, this past season, we had... It was a very warm year.
Yeah, I know.
I want to say, I have to go look at the time sheets, but it was, I think, 10 to 14 days. So, it was not a very good ice year. Wasn't a very good ice year. You know, we have to remember that each subsequent year was the warmest year on record. So, you know, will the rez continue in viability as an ice skating rink? That's hard to tell. We'd like to hope it is, and we like, we have the nostalgia of spending months on that facility. Is that an actual reality? It might not be, because we can't, no matter what the budget is, we can't control the weather, and we can't control the climate. But it is nice to know that we have it when, you know, if we do, because for those weekends that it is open, it's an amazing experience, and it does bring in lots of people from surrounding areas.
I'd be a little concerned, too, about avoiding the $675 we'd spend to treat the algae, because there's a potential for those weeds growing, and obviously, I think you would know better than anybody that there's a potential for that water to go septic and have odors.
Possibly, but it's not a huge issue. It can be.
For $675, it's worth not taking the risk, in my mind.
And can I remind you of one thing? The ice skating rink is a zero cost to the town of Southridge. It's all volunteer-run.
Right.
Which are most of our programs? I mean, obviously, you see, other than the West Street Summer Program, that's... And then, we also have a program services, so out of program services, we generally move money, when it's available, into things like camps. So, like, for example, a BMX bicycle clinic that we have one week, or two weeks a year in the spring and the summer, to kind of fill in the time right after school ends and right before school ends. That has a cost to it. And so, but other than that, everything is kind of volunteer, everything is volunteer-based, all-in program. The upcoming, brand-new flag football league that we are starting, all of those are volunteer-run.
Right on. Thank you, Steve. Does anyone else have questions? Comments? Would anyone like to make a motion to submit this? In the amount that was presented, which was $42,216.
I move that we send the $42,216 recreation budget to the town council for approval.
Any second? I'm going to second it, then. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second comment? Question?
Actually, Maureen just asked a question.
Yeah. Doesn't ConCon pay for the treatment of those weeds?
You sure?
No, we have a contract.
Okay.
I want to double, see if you double.
Then, how long do I... ConCon is paying for it.
Who's ConCon?
Conseguency.
Conservation.
Thank you for a good question, though, absolutely.
We don't have $675 every year.
Any further discussion on this agenda item, or we have a motion and a second?
I'm just, as a member of your voting committee tonight, I'm just not recommending, only because I need to be aware of that.
Sure. I can appreciate that. All right. All in favor? So, two? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. That was clear, and two to one. Let's see. All right. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mike, for that.
Oh, I got one more.
Right on. And I wasn't, I wasn't... Right. And I do realize it's almost 8:20. Andy, I see you back there. Thank you for your patience. We're almost to you.
That's right. I've got to get that going.
Steve, I'll be back in touch. I don't know where you are yet.
Veterans and Maureen.
You're trying to get rid of me or something?
Is it one or two? Is it on one?
Two.
Two, I thought so.
Okay, my final budget to come before you, Mr. Chairman, is what is called unclassified budget.
Yes, sir.
And the unclassified budget is veterans' benefits. 2018 budget was $145,000. We've dropped it to $135,000 this year. We've dropped it to a hundred and thirty-five thousand this year. Pardon me?
It was a hundred and forty.
It was a hundred and forty. We dropped it to a hundred and thirty-five.
You said one forty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyhow, it's been dropped by five thousand dollars. Keep in mind that that is a needs-based benefit for veterans in a time of need. And veterans' memorials, twenty-seven hundred dollars, which remains the same. Now, I can't give you a total because there's other items in there for that total. So it's one thirty-five plus twenty-seven hundred. There's two other items in there that I have no, nothing to do with, so. Whatever you come up with for totals.
One hundred and thirty-five plus seven hundred?
One thirty-five plus twenty-seven hundred.
Oh, twenty-seven hundred. So it's twenty-eight, thirty-five additions? Is that what you're saying?
Pardon me?
I'm confused what you're adding, where you're adding that money to.
The one thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-five thousand is for veterans' benefits.
Oh, a hundred and thirty-five, that, okay, right. All right, I'm sorry, Mike, what's that?
Twenty-seven hundred dollars for veterans' memorial.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm looking at the bottom total. I thought you were adding, I thought you said the number wasn't right.
Sure, I think I would just recommend that if someone wants to, you know, make a motion to recommend, they say veterans' benefits, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and then veterans' memorials, twenty-seven hundred. And that would just be two separate.
I'm hoping two of us. Well, it's gonna be one vote, both.
Combined vote?
That's general with the.
Combined.
Say that, you know, the two separate numbers.
For combined?
For combined.
For combined? Is that okay to add that?
I think that's a good way to do it.
We have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
On the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that's the money that when a veteran gets in trouble, you help them and then the state reimburses you.
That is correct.
And we're always here in the middle of the summer adding something on to that because, because the.
Yes, you are correct. But this year, believe it or not, I believe that I'm not going to have to come before council and ask for any additional dollars. I think I'm going to make it through the balance of this year and still have money to turn back. Because I put a couple of people back to full-time employment. And I've had a couple of people, unfortunately, one passed, and another one was over budget because of their asset level. So my list of clients has dropped a little bit. So the monthly spending.
But that's one of the things that we can't, you don't know now what it's going to be next summer.
No, you just don't, because it's a need-based.
It's statutory. I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah. And it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement from the state of Massachusetts, one year from the day it's reported.
Yes, I remember that.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Comments? Motion?
Oh, let's see. Make a motion that we recommend that council approve the, or recommend the budget to council for veterans' benefits of a hundred and thirty-five thousand and veterans' memorials of two thousand seven hundred for a total of, total budget of one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, I think, twenty-two?
One million, thirty-seven.
One million, wait. Or do you just want to do the others? So we're doing separate. Oh, sorry, my brain is totally out. I'm dealing with an emergency here.
One thirty-seven, seven is the number.
One thirty-seven, seven, sounds good to me. I thought we were going down with the rest of it.
Completely missed the Bay Path part of that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, it's at the top.
Seconded by Ms. Shea. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Mike, thank you.
Thank you very much.
As always, sir. And I'm so sorry, that last meeting where you presented, I said that you were in the Air Force. I can't get that out of my head.
I think that's a ten percent increase more.
There's only one military.
I don't know.
Over hill, over dale.
I'm home, they're Navy, I don't know if I deserve.
Next up on the agenda is item number five, which is to review the health budget. Andy, thank you for your patience.
I'll take five. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbull. As always, great to see you.
See you in the morning, girl.
Good night.
Kevin and Mike, while you're back there, before we get started, do you guys want to look at any of these budgets? I'm happy to let you take the book or you can come up and scope it out. Okay. Mr. Pelletier, welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
Good morning. This is my budget.
Karen says keep it short.
Every day.
This panel here has repeated, they've said it's a real tough year. And I think we can say that the real tough year is directly related to the loss of potential revenue to the landfill. You can imagine this was miserable on me, Ron, and Karen to try to keep this department somewhat whole, considering that most of the, a lot of the funding for the department comes directly from Casella. So this, the personnel in this department is probably the hardest part to get through and the hardest part to understand. So if we can work through that, I think we will have a comfort level on the rest of it. The rest of it actually is a cut. The only, actually, the whole thing is a cut, because we did cut a position significantly. But if we make, director position has a step and the yearly increase, a step increase and a yearly increase, capital increase. Capital?
Two percent, COLA.
That, call it that, for ninety thousand. The landfill monitor reflects a two percent increase, the COLA. The landfill spotter, we only funded for a half a year. Anticipation being that the landfill will be closed in a half a year and the spotter will not be needed. If it goes beyond the half a year, then we'll come back to council to adjust the budget. But at the same time, it's a hundred percent funded by Casella. So the adjustment in the budget will be one hundred percent paid by Casella. So there'll be no net effect to the town's general fund. But that will happen towards the end of December if the landfill projects to go further into January, February. And that won't go beyond the life of the landfill, because the spotter's job is directly related to trash coming into the landfill. Health inspector, he is currently a recycling coordinator and a health inspector, seventy-one percent funded by Casella. We are proposing that we keep him solid at thirty-six thousand for half the year, again, until the projected Casella stops taking trash and we assume will stop funding this position. Thereafter, we are going to redefine his job to be just an inspector. He will be addressing housing complaints, housing conditions, and nuisance complaints. The complaints will also be related to noise, dust, odors, trash, blight. But he will be complaint-driven. If he manages to find free time between the complaints, we will put him out proactively walking some of the CDBG areas to actually look for specific blighted on his own, rather than waiting for the complaints to come in. I anticipate that three to four complaints a week, I mean, four to eight complaints a week on housing. And housing can run anywhere from four hours to fifteen hours per complaint. I anticipate that this is going to be a full-time job. Now, the monies that we are currently putting into this position is approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. I went out looking for alternate funding so that we could maintain this position whole without affecting the general fund. I did some research on CDBG, and CDBG lists twenty-six specific eligible activities. I just let it known, I started in Pittsburgh with three other guys, all one hundred percent funded by CDBG in public health. One of, one of the eligible activities. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. This is, this is, we're an entitlement town, so we get CDBG funds every year. Specifically, one of the eligible activities is funding of code enforcement. Code enforcement being any agent who enforces the codes, either building code, sanitary code, noise, dust, odor codes, have to be applied to the CDBG target areas.
Are those specifically laid out in their definitions or requirements? Sanitation, health, buildings?
No.
So we're just.
Maybe used to code enforcement only in deteriorating or deteriorated areas where such enforcement, together with public use to pay salaries of inspectors enforcing codes in blighted areas.
So it's an interpretation of their rule that you're leaning on?
It is.
I just want to make sure that's what you're saying.
It is.
Can Councilor Clemens ask you a question, please?
Please.
Okay. So this reminds me of when CDBG was doing social service, when, when it came to us from our previous economic development director, Sandy, who came in and said, we have an option to utilize CDBG money for social services. And she asked the council, is that what they wanted this money to be intended to be used for? Now, whether or not she had to ask us or not is probably questionable, but she did. And at that time, we said that we would allow it for, you know, we tried it for a few years or whatever, and then we pulled back and said, social services. So I guess my question, as you could see it coming, is that's nice that it's an eligible activity, but is that something that should, that is supposed to be blessed in some way? As we've said, that, you know, CDBG plans and what it's being used for, generally, policy and, and what is it council would like to see for the community usually gets brought to subcommittee meetings and discussed and all that. And that's been a bit, bit off maybe the last few years. So again, I'm saying, so you're saying, oh, let's, let's use this for code enforcement and keep a job. Some people have a problem with that, just so you know. Because it's come to my attention when, when that was announced, I think that was made apparent at some meeting. And it was brought to my attention by at least a couple of people saying, we're now using CDBG money for, to keep employees code enforcing, which is important. Obviously, we have a lot of, we have a lot of issues. So I can see both sides of it. My biggest concern is, is this something that should have been, or if you're now using it for a different source, different component than we're used to using it for? Should we, should you not be, should you not be saying, hey, is that how we want our CDBG money spent? I guess this, versus buildings, roads, and all that other stuff we do with sidewalks and, do you know what I mean?
The entire CDBG proposal will be put before the council for vote for next year's money. The monies we are actually proposing to use to get through this fiscal year is the, and I'm not sure what the name of it is, but it's the money that we've gotten back from investment.
Programming.
It's programming.
Programming.
So initially, it won't be coming out of the CDBG block grant directly. I will point out.
But you're looking to, to ask for it that way?
I will be putting it in there, because our current use of CDBG, using it for road improvements and.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks and stuff like that. I'm not, not trying to put disrespect out there, but I cannot find anything in any of these papers that says shall be used for. Actually, I actually found something that specifically says shall not be used for. Shall not be used for maintenance and repair of publicly owned streets, parks, playgrounds, water. Specifically, the mission of CDBG is authorized by Title I of housing. It's first off, it's out of the HUD, Housing and Community Development. By providing decent housing, which this would have a direct effect on, suitable living environment, which this would have direct effect on, and expanding economic opportunities, principally for low and moderate income people. So I feel that the, the thirty thousand I'm asking to be put to this position is directly to the mission of CDBG. I have actually looked at, I've asked Matt to give me a real quick rundown on what thirty thousand dollars would buy in a repaving of a road.
Oh, yeah.
And it's about, it's approximately two hundred and fifty feet of road.
I don't think that needs to be.
So I don't, I think.
We're talking.
The ability to get a person into these rundown houses, these blighted structures, to address the blighted conditions versus two hundred and fifty feet of road, I just feel that the impact is significantly better. So I would ask consideration to at least go with this initial monies to see if we can get an advantage out of it.
Well presented.
Thank you.
Documented.
And this is homework, doesn't it? Thank you, Councilor Clemens. Councilor Steves?
Not from you.
Please don't do that.
I'm gonna follow up on that one with, with the fact that I thought we had already gone through the interview and hiring process for this particular post.
Nope, what we did, that was a.
For the current.
There's two, there's, there's two, we just hired a part-time building inspector. Because we have not been, the state code allows for the inspection of all places of assembly, which we've successfully been doing. But it also allows for the inspection of multifamily dwellings. So we just put somebody on with the intent that his job will be to inspect a multifamily dwelling. We haven't been able to get to that historically, not just my realm, but prior to that. Even when the departments were separated and they had us full-time just on that side, it just couldn't be done. It's too much work. So, but in doing this, we hope that he will offset his own, we set a price of twenty-five dollars per living housing unit on this, on these inspections. So that, that local inspector we're hiring, we hope will eventually, once he gets a program up and running and he's running full, full bore, be almost paying for his entire salary back into the general fund coming out of the CDBG. So it will be monies that essentially will be totally weighted towards the, the general fund side.
So, so, so I am right in that that is the code inspector that we are.
That is the, yeah, it's a local, we'll call it the local inspector, because a code inspector is anybody who checks code. Everybody falsely calls a building inspector a code inspector. There's zoning code, there's building code, there's housing code, there's swimming, there's, I have about forty-seven codes.
Will we call it the code enforcer? Is that the word that we were talking about with?
He's a local inspector.
I was thinking about, because you got the, he was referring to the person.
Eric is the current sanitary inspector. We are looking to.
To keep Eric.
We're looking to keep the position. Let's keep people out of this.
The reason I ask is, it sounds like we're talking about two different roles entirely.
We, they're out.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
From the health solid waste to this, another one of these enforcers, inspectors.
He'll be, he'll be the sanitary code inspector. And I'll give up all of my housing inspections and, to him, and I'll start doing hopefully the recycling and trash. So it's kind of a shifting of duties, keeping the office whole, but essentially saving twenty thousand dollars off the cost of the deal. The new position, it was at a MS seventeen max. The new position will be written in at an MS thirteen, step one.
Councilor Clemens, yeah?
How many tickets have we written? How many violations have we written on code, on, on trash? On trash?
As I presented, when I did the total program, we were going to take the rest of the winter for education and come spring, we were going to start writing tickets. So starting Monday, I will be riding around with the, with the curbside diet and basically getting another view of what he's doing, making sure that he's doing it to my standard. And our expectation is that come May first, we are going to start writing tickets on any trash can that is not a Towne Southbridge trash can, any trash that is not contained, basically the trash violations.
Okay, well, we used to write a lot, then we stopped. Then, we used to write a lot, then we, even if you don't, even if you forgive, you forgive once and they get a point and they stop doing it. Now, it's moved on to, I mean, it's just, it's nasty out there again. And yet, we've had a position for this. And so I say it because just the other day, walking again, in one, just whole track down one street, main, a main street area, took lots of pictures of violation after violation after violation. And I don't understand why, if I can see it in a, you know, a thirty-minute walk, why our person is not out there leading some information, doing something. So I'm a little concerned about that and I don't see that activity, so just bringing it up.
I have spoken extensively with Ms. Stevens. She is pointing this out, and this is one of the reasons I'm going out on the rideabouts with him starting Monday.
I wish I had stuff with me, I'd just leave it.
I'll become an entity at six thirty.
You should have a little volunteer.
If you.
We'll give you vests.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Denise, if you would, when you see this, they, please send us a short email letting us know locations and stuff.
We do.
They do.
Oh, we do.
You getting a little?
I take pictures, I got them on my.
Because we're having a lot of conversation about this position and that, and I'd really love to see.
I just want to see some action, because I saw more action when we had the half police and the dog officer doing it than we see now. And they got cleaned up, it got cleaned up. And for about a year, we were in really good shape, because people were scared to death. And all of a sudden, we've had more.
When I first came in four years ago.
West clients.
I saw the streets four years ago. I can show you pictures of the streets four years ago. My favorite picture is a shot of mechanic street. Oh my God, the improvement is amazing. Having said that, I take a walk down.
It was on Elm Street, I was on Marcy. Yeah, Marcy, yep.
And I cry because I compare that to mechanic street. That is the reason I'm going to start doing the driveabouts. That is the reason I want to take over the trash, rather than.
Well, that's what we hired somebody for, so.
So I will be overseeing him directly. Once, once this change happens.
Thank you, let's keep on with the budget.
Yep, thank you. Well, it's just, if we're going to change the budget, we're gonna.
Yeah, understood.
So he will stay at his current salary and current position as recycling coordinator slash inspector for the first half year. Thereafter, we'll reduce the, the salary for the position and go the second half at the twenty-five thousand. That, that covers the, the salary, I mean, the paid positions in town. Going down.
I want to switch to this one. Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, Andy, I just wanted to, let us go back and point out that the landfill monitor, I know you said it's budgeted for a full year, but we also budgeted a full year of reimbursement from Casella to offset that.
The reason we're keeping that for a full year is, I anticipate that if we don't have that position up there for the full year, we're going to put a clerk of the works up there to oversee the closure of this landfill.
Yeah.
We've wanted to have eyes on this thing to protect the Towne Southbridge from the onset of the site assignment. And I cannot imagine that we would want to have less observation on this thing during the closure. So I'm going to make an argument that.
Call it the same title.
I'm going to make an argument that the contract.
Should cover them.
Sites, closing of the landfill, and the contract sites, that they shall cover a monitor through the contract. So therefore, in my opinion, they cover the monitor through the contract. If they don't and we lose. If we, if they don't and we lose that in court, then I'm probably going to come back and ask this council to fund the second half of this job, possibly at reduced hours, but I, the town needs to have eyes on it. Especially through closure, because that's the critical, the critical securing.
That's a walkover.
It's a final, it's a final lockdown.
Thank you. We had two questions, and I'm sorry, I was taking notes. Which one of you wanted us to go first? Kevin, Mr. Boxton?
I just wanted to, I agree with the idea that if it has to go to court, it has to go to court. The landfill has a thirty-year closure period that Casella has to oversee it. And we, as a property owner, have an equal opportunity to oversee that thirty-year period. So I don't know why it wasn't confirmed in the contract that all the periods that of the post-closure should have been covered by the landfill monitor.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Marquett?
Salt.
All right, let's move along, shall we?
Folks, can we, can we get through this? It's eight forty. Mr. Marquett?
Well, I'm trying to encourage people to move on.
No, thank you. You had a point. Thanks. Any, any other questions? Or Andy, would you like to continue, please?
Going on in the budget. I don't know how to read this thing. Sorry, isn't we, overtime salary is, overtime salary is something we use, excuse me?
Curbside monitors versus the twenty-one thousand?
Curbside monitor. Showing the two percent on curbside monitor, the, the intention is to keep him as long as I have recycling funds. To Denise's point, the curbside has a long way to go, and we want to keep eyes on it, keep improving that. As, if I can take as. As, if I can take as long as I have to take to get it right thereafter, maintenance will be much easier. But I have recycle monies and I believe curbside and recycling are directly linked. So that comes out of, that I will try to keep alive out of recycling monies. It is currently coming out of the money, there's a $72,000 reimbursement that Casella gives us in exchange for a recycle bank program, I believe. It's currently coming out of that. Overtime budget is.
Did you have, somebody ask a question? Thank you. Please, Mr. Buxton, thank you.
How long will that $72,000 be coming to the town?
It is, it's a monthly fee that comes to the town. So once the, once the landfill ends, the monthly fee will add.
It's based on the number of households in the system. It was originally based on the pay of the recycle bank money. It was four or five dollars per household based on 6,000 households. I forget the exact ways. But it was based on those funds that were going to recycle bank. When Casella chose to eliminate recycle bank, those funds were then transferred to the $72,000. I know, because I've always had a. Tick about. My concern is that if within the contract, it's, it, it should be, it should be attached to the curbside pickup, which is till the year 2027. But the closing of the landfill should not have an impact on curbside pickup.
It could be right. I'm open to that. That'd be good. Let me just let that hit.
Then I'm gonna state for the record, it's not, it wasn't just recycle bank was the initial deal. The, they had to put towards a recycling effort. And because recycle bank had so much problems going on and people were not happy with that, they said, why are we bothering to fund that? We'll just give you the money for education and everything else. So if you leave, that contract is very clear. People had to pay for recycle bank at some point. It was never going to be a full free program. You're gonna pay a monthly fee. It's right in the contract, yellow to orange, pink. Just saying, it bugs me when everybody says recycle bank was the greatest thing. It was okay.
Do you remember what the term was in? That's what the question was.
Well, no, it's obviously, I don't know. I would have to, I never thought about that. But if it's curbside, if it's curbside and recycling was, was in conjunction.
It's tied up to 2027.
Yeah, if recycling pickup and trash pickup was, was tied, then to me, it would make sense that it's a curbside situation and therefore it should be tied. But yeah, they came up with this magic number of 72,000 and that's when it stayed.
And we know there's a million things that can affect that going on right now.
Right, right. If recycling was, no matter whether the landfill was open, closed, if recycling was, it was independent of quote, the landfill, like, like the curbside was supposed to be or is supposed to be, then it would make sense. But I'm not the lawyer and I, I could look at it, but.
And we'll need to look at that.
Thank you. Bring that up. Take that. Okay, Andy?
Overtime is dedicated to Mr. Rob. Rob is the landfill spotter up there, Mr. Jones. And oftentimes he covers for Anna when she's out, has vacation, stuff like that. When he covers for Anna, he still comes in at his start time, but he works overtime to cover her additional hours at the end doing her inspections of the landfill. So obviously not as complete as she does, but he does the minimum when she's out. So overtime is also 100% reimbursed by Casella. We funded it full. If the landfill closes in December, it stops with Casella's money. So it's not gonna affect general fund anyway, whether we funded it full, funded it a half a year. We added Mr. Jones from 8:25 to our longevity. So longevity went up by $500 a share. We have 1,000 going to Ms. Anna Smith, 500 going to Ms. Maritza, Port Latin, and 500 going to Bob Jones this year.
Counselor Steves?
This is like, it's through you, to Karen or Juan, whoever answers this question. It seems like, how come, it seems like here, we've got people getting longevity at 500 bucks a person from 2008, yet in the library, the lowest one is like 1995.
That's the start year. That's when they were hired.
No, I get, I get, that's my point. This person's been hired in 2008, but, but I mean, there's many people that have been in the, in the library longer than 2008 and they're not getting longevity.
They should, certainly should be.
It doesn't look like they are based on what we saw earlier today. I could be wrong.
Someone in a library page or an aide wouldn't get longevity. Everybody's accounted for it here that I, that I know of.
Could it be that they already?
There's one pro-rated. No, there's a, there's a max of 25.
Maybe they reached a max that doesn't show anymore. I wonder if that would be the case.
No, absolutely not, because it would be listed here. Yes, absolutely.
Like it talks like here, it says Michelle Garcia starts in 2008 and she's getting $400.
Right, because she only worked 60 hours instead of 75.
Oh, okay.
She works less hours. So it's pro-rated.
Thank you.
Purchase of services is a fixed number. That is the rubbish from the curbside program. We put the 350 into it, we get 350 back. It is 100% reimbursed to the town. No effect on the general fund, but not an option to cut. It is a fixed number. Repair and maintenance of motor vehicles. I have a $3,000 line item on that. I am maintaining a 2008 Ford Ranger and a 2006 Trailblazer. When I bought the Focus, I was very clear that I will run a car and so its tires fall off. So as long as in my mind, keeping the car alive is more economical to the town of Southridge, I will make every attempt to keep a car alive. I don't know if you remember my old truck, but it wasn't pretty, but it still lived. So I kept it at $3,000 because I have two vehicles that are 10 years old and, and still going. This year, out of that account, I spent, so far, I spent $1,200. I am facing at least a $700 to $800 engine light that won't go off. They're gonna have to track it. So I drove this over hill over dale to try to get the code to reset and it won't reset. So that's going back in. So that went down to approximately $1,000 in that account and I still have three months to go for the year.
Just a question. I mean, all the rest is supposed to be zeros. Do you want to go through each one in detail or what do you want to do?
I'm happy to just explain that we can skirt past them unless someone has specific line items, we can stop.
I believe we did cut the mileage.
Yeah, you can go down to there. Yeah, all of them is zero until. Conferences and meetings.
I do have a question.
Counselor Clemens, yeah, please.
So under section, what is it, 50? Well, it's under the class of 50, personal services there down below, where you've got the $40,000, the communicable disease, living expenses, tie-in bond and process. So I see that you spent only so far in 18, you've got the 12,006, you were budgeted at 40, you were budgeted before and didn't spend as much. You're budgeted at 40. You're still at 12, you, you're not hitting it again, but you're still budgeted at 40.
My, this is specifically to, let me reword that. This rides a tide. I just wrote a check for well over $1,000 to my public health nurse. Public health nurse usually sits between 300 and 400. We are having a rapid flu season this year. Spikes up. If I have one TB, it's going to spike up. So I need to keep a robust enough number in there to cover the spikes in that thing. I might go months at a time at 300 and 400, but I will definitely spike. I think, I believe the money for the communicable disease is 14,000. Tie-in bond, we, we've been in cell 73 for over a year now, 74, I believe we're in. So there wasn't that much review. However, we're gonna, we're entering a closure. I've already invested in this small CAD 1. We just invested, I think, between $4,000 and $6,000 for the review on CAD 1. There's going to be a second CAD for the major closure and I don't know what kind of reviews that's gonna bring from tie-in bond. So I need to be prepared for whatever tie-in bond. And, and we negotiate this thing. We talked to tie-in bond and they say, yeah, it's gonna be 20,000 to review that. And I'm like, no, it's not. I want you to look at this and that and give me a real brief on everything. So Anna and I are on the phone with tie-in bond constantly saying, no, why is it that much? That's ridiculous. You know, we're just asking you to review somebody else's engineering work. So I don't know what this, I've never sat through a closure before. I don't know what this closure is gonna bring for reviews, permit reviews, construction reviews, site visits to make sure they're compliant. It's, I chose to keep that robust enough to cover that.
Okay. And then you move on down to lab and testing too. You have a similar kind of deal. You were 12. You haven't gotten there. You were 6,600 before. You spent 63, it looks like.
That 12 is based on, we do quarterly auditing on their work to make sure that they're doing.
Right.
I had proposed cut this once before and it was told, oh, we gotta keep our eyes on, on Casella. So this is a price actually that they gave me. Four times a year, they do pay additional surface water and well water sample, send it to a alternate lab. They do it at the same time that Casella does it so that there's no question in the, in the conditions of the testing. Just to make sure that Casella's lab results are the same as, are legit. So, and this is based on the $3,000 a quarter that they gave me.
Is it validation of what Casella tests?
Third-party, third-party review, just to make sure that.
But we didn't spend it.
They missed one of them. I had it out.
16 or 17. It's not in close, right? Am I reading this wrong?
Yeah, you're right.
So why are we $12,000? No, but, but we had, we didn't spend it in 16 or 17.
That doesn't show. It says 6,600, 17. 40, 200, 60.
Then you get your original adjusted for 18, which we haven't.
That's not official.
I don't like yours. I don't like yours.
This is the official record.
Well, I got this book here. You tell me what I'm looking at.
Yeah, you're right.
Am I not comparing the right numbers?
Yeah, you're right.
We spent $4,200 in 16 and 6,600 in 17.
Right. So I'm saying why.
In 18, I spent 2,300.
We spent 6,300. So maybe they, maybe they will this year. I don't know.
I'm just asking, you know, we're looking at numbers.
No, I'm just looking at $100. I'm looking at 6,000.
I'm going 5, 4,000.
I know there was one year they missed it and we basically had it out with them. It's like we need eyes on this stuff.
So what would happen?
So they haven't been doing that cap for the testing.
I'm just asking. You're gonna turn, you have to turn it back, but then you're gonna ask for it again. This, this is the kind of thing we talked about where either we know what we're spending or we don't and we usually know, so if you had spent that money on other things, go back to that subject, and then you, and it looked like you spent 12,000 on testing, but really it wasn't because you used it for something else like the monitor, then we would never know that we, what our actual spending on testing was because we're testing it for spending on other things. It's just an example.
Understood.
Thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad my counselor's understanding.
So first of all, I agree with the number that Denise is giving out. My question to you is, what if we cut this by a couple of grand? What would happen if all of a sudden we needed the funding? You'd have to come back in for a transfer or something? What would, how would you do it? Is that what you thought would be? If you, if we cut this by two grand.
If we cut this budget right now.
What would be the impact, you think?
First off, my recommendation would be not to cut it by two grand, but to cut it by quarters. One quarter, two quarter, three quarter, because this is based on quarterly testing. So we would be looking at $3,000 approximately, four, six or nine. And if I really needed it, I would go back to probably the, depending on how robust I'm using tie-in bond through the closure, I would probably try to transfer it out of there if I needed it back into this.
So do you intend to do every quarter?
It is always my intention to do every quarter.
But you have, it hasn't happened in the past. The numbers don't show.
I will look into that. I was fairly certain we were getting a quarter.
And do we go up to bid and do we find, I mean, is it always gonna always be that price or should we not be looking every so many years? Is there another company? Are we all confused?
I'm gonna argue that I don't know what the future is gonna bring, how often we need to do this. There's probably gonna be an independent company hired to go independent of us and Casella.
Right.
So that will report directly to us and Casella on the results. So I'm not sure if we're going to need the auditing of the results into the future unless there's a reason that we feel that we're being.
It's really auditing because it's not, because it's Casella's test. So we're, we're reviewing that to make sure that they're accurate or that they meet our.
So I would not lose sleep. I would not lose sleep cutting this budget in half, assuming a half a year of life of the landfill. And then there'll be a closure, closure period, which is probably gonna bring us into the, into the FY '20.
I like hearing what you're saying, but before he loses his train of thought, can I please recognize Mr. Buxton? You had a question or comment?
Just, just a question of if this is tie-in bond and testing relating to the landfill, another question of reimbursement. I was assuming that.
No, this is independent auditing testing.
This is third-party verification, more or less, Kevin.
It's our choice.
I was under the impression that even third-party verification would be.
No, we wouldn't ask anything from a company coming in for research and finding out they're wrong.
No, I'm not saying.
This is exactly what we're saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying they picked the third-party.
No, we picked the third.
But I assumed there was a possibility.
Thank you for asking. Yep. So just to go back to Andy's last statement, you wouldn't lose sleep over cutting this in half?
I, I would not with the recognition that the landfill is closing. I only need two quarters and then I'm gonna have to reassess what we're doing. And obviously I think that I'm going to need input from, from counsel and powers to say, how much oversight do we want to see after closure?
Understood.
So again, I guess I'm trying to understand the exact word. These are deep, do deep well tests, is that what they're?
We do surface water tests and deep well tests. We randomly pick one surface water and one deep well.
So my question here, I'm trying to understand this, and again, this is kind of a technical situation. But, but I would think that testing doesn't stop when the landfill closes. Because DEP, Casella is forced to test those wells even after closure, because what they're looking for is what is leading the landfill and moving somewhere.
Yes.
So I'm wondering why you're telling me that they're suggesting that testing might end when the landfill closes.
I don't believe testing will end when the landfill.
The analysis of it.
I don't believe testing will end when the landfill closes. What I believe is there will be an independent, basically there will be a company assigned to oversee, Casella's not gonna be there. Casella's gonna have a presence, keeping the machines up and running. No, Casella will hire a company to be their monitor that's gonna come out there and do this stuff periodically. But this monitor will probably also be reporting directly to us. Basically, all the reports will go straight out.
We don't think we need an independent monitor.
I don't feel at this point, but I don't, I've never been for closure before. It's, it's possible.
I mean, I would like to see that the task get done is what I would like to see.
Well, that and make sure that they're not.
No, I was just gonna say, it's $6,000. We maybe just want to leave that for now.
This is a dangerous industry that we can't pass.
I'm just, I'm just asking because we're not spending. So I'm saying, what's the, we're nickel and diming everything, so.
So reasonable request, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Based on the history, I can, I can appreciate the point, but I would probably go to 12,000 and.
You don't spend this day there.
A minute later. Thank you for bringing it up though.
When you, back to that, just one other thing, the communicable disease, I know you said the flu season, can you give us numbers? I mean, it's not on here. Here it's in one total, but what was the, I see the expense of what you actually spent on the entire, but you don't see the line items on that. So I'd be curious what the, you know what I'm saying? Like, you know what I'm talking about, right? I'd like to see what the actuals. Yeah, yeah, especially the communicable one. Just curious if that, if it's legal to tell us. Only because all we see is what was, you know, we see only the bottom line and that does, that includes that tie-in bond thing, which is not necessarily.
It's not communicable.
Very good. Thank you.
So does anyone have any other questions on the zero increase line items as we continue past purchase of services?
Miscellaneous materials and supplies?
Miscellaneous materials and supplies. Here is a.
We spent two, we spent 300. We're requesting 3,000. We spent 40.
What that is, is for boarding and securing of structures. So if I cannot get a landlord to do it, if I cannot get a responsible party to do it, we hire a contractor to go out and basically board up open buildings. The 3,000 sits there because any given year, I don't know if I'm gonna need it. But when I do need it, logically, I'm ordering an owner to board within 24 hours. I need to get it boarded for a matter of public safety.
That would include fires too. You're right. Fire buildings. If some catch on fire, we have to go to the owner's door. I wait for safety purposes.
Did you have something?
No.
Oh, you're pointing to something.
No.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Steves. Thank you.
Okay. If that's the case, then what did you actually spend the 40 bucks on?
This year's actually. I'm looking at this here. I'm at 950, 924.
That's like one, that's like one piece of plywood or something.
I'm trying to remember if I did one. It's possible I went out and bought a piece of wood and some screws and did one myself.
Yeah.
I know I'm not supposed to do that, but I might have.
You might not, my, my wood off.
It might have been a lot easier for me to drive a screw than to call somebody. So I can look into what that actual bill was. I'll find out.
I just jumped out. And also, if, if we're, if the landfill is, if the landfill does end up closing in December on this landfill monitoring system thing, will we end up having to continue paying for that?
Landfill monitoring.
Is the line, is the line of other charges expenses, the DSL lines for landfill monitoring?
She's still gonna be there.
No, other charges.
A DSL line.
Yeah, the DSL.
Oh.
15700, Class 57.
There's two, there is a data license that we're paying for up there and a DSL line up there. She is still going to be up there, operating out of that shed. So she will still need internet access for Anna. If indeed we choose to, if the council supports the budget and keeps her through closure. She'll still need internet access through. She'll still need internet access through the closure.
Okay.
So I kept it up there. The camera system, I got it budgeted in full because I have her researching. Once the cam, once the trash stops coming in, the data supplies... Data supplies is actually a license for a camera system. When trash stops, we probably won't need a camera system anymore. So I have her researching, is this a yearly license, or is this a monthly license that we can stop paying in December? She's researching that for me now. So that might be, that might be give-back money later.
Do you really wanna leave that with nobody being able to look at it even on a camera?
Thank you.
The only camera, the camera is for the trucks coming in. It's over the scale.
Oh, alright.
So we get to, basically, if we see a lot of tires or something, we grab the guy and say, get out of there.
Right.
But the only thing coming in is gonna be soils.
Specific truckloads.
Are we gonna, is there a way to test that soil to make sure it's not contaminated or radioactive?
They have to one, they have to weigh it with a one. Don't they have to find out if there's any real attack damage?
I know all the trash has to go through a GAGA camera. I don't know if that's gonna have to be, I'll have to check on the, does... The only soils that can come into a landfill are clean soils or K97 soils that have a, what's called a BUD, Beneficial Use Determination by DEP.
What does that mean as far as people, people have repeatedly complained that they were getting contaminated soils already anyway, so...
Well, there's reality.
You're talking about the cover material.
There's accusations.
So with Andy saying, and I don't know the technical name, but DEP allows a certain type of the type of soil to cover. And it's only, and it has to be tested and proven for it to go up there. Exactly what that is, I don't know the details. I guess that's what he's calling it. But it's true, it goes up there, but it's allowed by DEP for cover. It must not be too dangerous, whatever it is.
Any other questions?
No.
I think if we're on the last page, I don't really see too much to be concerned about when you talk about dues and subscriptions, Andy, where you dropped three hundred bucks from last year's budget?
Yep, that's basically to cover a lot of my fraternal groups that actually, by being a member of that, I get a lot of my education for cheaper. So, and I have about thirteen licenses I have to maintain, so it's good to be a member of about thirteen groups.
Okay. And you've eliminated the recycling efforts line, obviously, right?
Yeah. Excuse me?
The recycling efforts line's been eliminated for 2019?
Yeah.
Under capital outlays?
Yes.
I make a motion to recommend the, the health department's budget. It says it is the health department budget in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Do we have a second on the motion?
For the council adopting this part.
Answer for adoption, okay. And thank you for pointing out there were questions, Kevin and Mike. Would you guys want to be handled?
They got a eleven point out six percent.
No, all I wanted to say earlier was that I don't see why we have to have a monster up there once the landfill's closed. And I know the answer is you don't trust Casella, but somebody should at least ask mass DEP if they're willing to take any responsibility. I think that they are overall, they are responsible.
Yeah, what I'm not, what I'm asking for isn't once the landfill stops taking trash. There's a, there's a difference. When they stop taking trash, when it's closed. So when it's closed, I will not ask for this position again. I don't think you'll see this on next year's budget request.
Once it's capped.
It will go, shall be on full through the, through the trash calling. But once trash stops, we still wanna have eyes through the closing. Once it's closed, we won't need it out there anymore. So it's, it's only through the closing that I'm concerned about. I just wanna protect Southbridge.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Go ahead. Just figure, I think that's gonna be about a two-year period, though. The closing, I'm told that it's about a two-year period.
Possible. It depends on how quick they get the permits. It depends on permit timing.
All I'm asking is that somebody ask mass DEP if they're willing to have any money.
They're not going to.
Well, why not? They're responsible.
They don't, it's a town, it's a town landfill. DEP will come in and do testing and monitor testing, and actually, I don't think they actually come and do any of the testing. They look at all the test results by both Sandbar and Had and the independent testing company. But they, you know, the only time they come inspected, they think there's something wrong. They don't hang out here in any way.
DEP won't be involved. Either the town or Casella will be responsible for hiring a monitoring agent, and that agent will periodically, maybe four or five times a year, come to the site, take whatever tests have to be tested, check to make sure all the closing materials are in place.
They come out once in a while and they inspect. Usually, when I hear they're inspecting, it's because they think there's some runoff into water. There's some cause for inspection. Do they do just like the general inspection once in a while?
They periodically show up for that. They also show up for waste ban inspections every once in a while to make sure that adherent to their waste ban products. Very sporadic.
Thank you for the question, and while it's important stuff, we wanna stick to the budget as much as we can. It's all relevant. I get it. We have motion in a second. Any other questions about the budget and the motion to approve or submit to council in the amount of seven thirty-seven, four hundred and ninety-one dollars? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Andy, you had one other item on our agenda?
I do.
Which is number six, discuss disposal of illegally dumped regulated materials in proposed plan, entertain a motion to vote to submit to council. Thank you. Thank you for sticking it out.
Obviously, with the pending burden of the landfill, we are looking at a whole bunch of, I'll say favors that we've been getting from Casella that we are no longer gonna get, or we are no longer getting. We have enjoyed, things like that are going to be, a transfer station that's gonna go away, a composting pile that's on their property, I believe, so we will not have access to that anymore. Hazardous waste day, which we will not have through them anymore, and I think that's a critical service. We have to decide how to, how to finagle that one. But the one that came up four months ago was I had some tires that Casella used to take, and I brought them up there. They were illegally dumped tires, and Casella charged me for them. So, and they charged me their rate, which was ten bucks a tire. So I sat down with Heather and I said, you know, we can still pick up the, we can still bring them up there, but it's gonna cost for any type of illegal dumping we got.
Sure.
So we talked about it, and we decided that it might be best if we find a way to contract it out ourselves to get rid of them. So I am asking for the council to approve the purchase of a couple of holding trailers, because obviously, I don't want tires to be held outdoors where they're going to breed mosquitoes and act as a rodent hobbage. So a couple of trailers, of which I have a estimate from a company who's willing to sell me two. One of them's already on our property, because he screwed up, but I, I bought two of them to hold Todes in. He delivered three of them. So I actually have possession of three of them. I just don't have titles for three of them. So I wanna buy that third one and an additional one that he has promised us. The price is included in the memo. I believe it was twenty-five or thirty-five hundred for both of them. Thirty-five hundred. I would take it out of what was the capital outlay account, but is now a recycling fund account, because my intent is everything is going to be recycled, electronics and Akias. And those are the two biggest illegally dumped stuff, although I fear when the landfill closes, what illegal dumping is gonna turn into. But things like couches and furniture will be able to crush up and put in our municipal dumpsters. This is the biggest illegal dumping concern I have at the moment, because it's regulated material. It's a banned material with DEP.
Counsel of Justice, please.
Thank you. Andy, is, can tires be stored that way internally without issue? You know, because a lot of times you hear of the combustible or the burn situation of tires and stuff. Are we good with storage? You know, have to be in a warm container? You know, I mean, I don't know. Is this, is it gonna be a closed container?
I'll double-check with DEP. It will be a tractor-trailer unit.
Right.
I don't want it to get weathered.
Right. So, but you don't regulate temperatures, so is there any concern at all?
I don't believe tires spontaneously combust. I don't believe somebody throws...
Right. I don't believe so either. I'm just kinda thinking about...
I believe it gets really hot and somebody flicks a cigarette in the room, you know?
Is nature storage allowed in such a manner?
I will, I will check with DEP.
Just, yeah, if you could just make sure that it's, it's an allowable use or system.
I can do that.
For storing tires versus an open-air system or something, you know, maybe they want it.
I definitely know...
I grant that it's not airtight, but it's still...
I definitely know open air is not acceptable, especially with West Nile and Triple E, but DEP.
Yeah, but I meant like open air in terms of you got the top covered, but maybe that ventilation or... I'm just saying, make sure that trailer tire storage is allowed by DEP. That's all.
Mr. Buxton?
Hi, yes, I'd just like to emphasize the fact that it is illegal dumping, and we should be trying to stop and apprehend these illegal dumpers.
It will always be my fault already. I've tried to avoid it.
Actually, you know I love to blame people.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kevin.
And so you said this is gonna come out of the balance or some of the monies that's still already in the capital outlay already?
Well, we took, it's in capital outlay this year, so I'll spend it from there. The capital outlay is money, is part of that seventy-two thousand that we've been accumulating for recycling efforts, and I think this is a valid expenditure for recycling or recycling storage.
But this is a yearly fee, a yearly rental, or is this a purchase?
I'm purchasing these. So we will never see this purchase again. What we will see in the future is after I've done this for a year and I see how many I accumulate and what it's gonna cost to dispose, I will probably try to put that into the budget as an annual, this is what it's gonna cost to get rid of tires every year. Now, having said that, I might have a way to generate monies out of this. Apparently, electronics are more valuable than I thought, because I did get bids on that, on those electronics. No, not good, because now I have to commit time with will to take all the brains out of them, so it's actually gonna cost personnel time.
Well, you shouldn't be, you should be heading, there's gotta be a lack, there's gotta be a lower end that can do that, less money than you made.
But anyhow, there is a value to recycling electronics, so hopefully...
Maybe the sustainability community can do it.
Yeah, how about sustainability? That's a great idea.
When we sell these, we'll be able to get some money into a revolving account of some kind. And also, we might be able to hold some electronics disposal days, where if it costs us twenty cents a pound, we can charge twenty-five cents a pound. Still ridiculously reasonable compared to the rates that Casella's charging.
Glad you looked into this and you made that determination.
Might be able to make some money.
No, it's okay. One other thing on that, as far as the tires. Okay, so we're picking them up and it's costing us money. That's great. But what about, you know, if we offered this as a get-rid-of-your-tire thing at a certain price? Now, for every one we take, we can get rid of two or three or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So maybe that can be possible.
Whereas Casella was charging ten dollars, if I can get rid of them for three, I can charge four, or I can charge five. That was low in the budget for some people.
Make people happy. Right, but what, no, no, no. I need a little word on that, because what I'm saying is you have, you're picking up illegal tires that no one's paying us a penny to keep. What I'm saying is when you take on somebody else's tire, which is why Casella's paying charge ten dollars, maybe we charge less, but it should be at least double so we can get rid of two tires. In other words, one that we picked up on the side of the road and one that the people paid us.
I've been, I've been playing with the idea in my head.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it's gotta, it's gotta be cost, it's gotta be beneficial.
So if we put a three-dollar tire, we should charge six to take somebody else's.
Yeah, I'm saying, somebody else should be paying a six to get rid of their tires, like, or eight.
Stealthy with the Casellas.
It's a possibility. I wanna see how robust tires become when the landfill closes, when, when...
Well, people get fined, they're gonna wanna pay next time.
If I can catch them.
It's cheaper to pay six dollars.
We might need the full capacity of that trailer with upside ash. So I wanna go in, I wanna go into the revenue generating slowly to make sure that we can have the capacity to handle out.
But I think if we can offer people places for their stuff to go...
That's always been key to me.
That, you know, waiting to offer once, especially if things happen with the trash and the curbs, all that. If we can, if we can foster, here's a place for it to go for a reasonable price, then maybe we won't get so many illegal tires either. You know, it's kind of a win-win both. The brain thing, is it very difficult to do what you're talking about?
I've never done it. Will's gonna show me how.
The reason I ask, you're gonna have your beautification year April day, right? You have your beauty day here. What if you could, on that day, collaborate to get a group of people, one group, one of these volunteer groups that wanna clean up the streets? Well, how about they volunteer to dismantle brains?
I have a hippos that just called.
How about Siggy?
No, somebody with some brains.
Senior citizen might like to do, who does not want to go out and pick up trash in the...
I think we can address this later on. It's a great idea. Let's get back. You wanna talk about the details you planned at all?
I think...
Anything specific? That's it?
I think that's pretty much it. I'm just looking for support to get these trailers and move on with this program.
All right. It's kind of broad, but I think it makes sense. It wasn't specific.
You were looking at thirty-five hundred, right?
Well, the agenda item calls for details in the proposed plan, so...
And entertain a motion.
And entertain a motion, so...
So the motion would be...
The proposed plan was just verbal and I didn't want to get anything else. I'm happy to move on this if you will make the motion.
Okay, yeah, no, we'll make the motion to recommend that council approve the purchase of the board health proposal to purchase two trailers for thirty-five hundred dollars.
If you want, I actually wrote the motion at the...
Oh, you did write something, money to be transferred from, yada, yada, yada. That way, you can kill two birds with one stone. Good job. Thank you, because if you told me, I would have written it earlier.
Sorry.
Where is it?
Bottom.
It's not a motion to approve, just so you know. It's a motion to recommend. So...
I was writing it for the council.
I make a motion to recommend that council approve thirty-five hundred dollars from the budget of the Department of Inspection's Health Department Program Line, number fifty-eight hundred, capital outlay, for the purchase of two trailers for holding regulated waste, you can have this out.
Okay, thank you.
Found on the town properties and or generated through normal operations of the town of Southbridge. Any cost of disposing of these items must be approved through budget approval or other action of the Southbridge Town Council. Okay, all right.
That's, that's the detail I was looking for.
There you go. Then that would be the explanation that we needed.
Right on.
But that's a...
It covers everything. It's a perfect motion.
Good motion, yes. Okay, so we have a motion, seconded by Ms. Shea. Thank you, Andy. That actually makes a lot of sense.
It does. It's a little wordy as a motion goes, so...
I have seen some of the motions up there.
Your trailer proposal.
I have seen some of your motions.
You supported the trailer proposal to, yeah, and then you could have explained it, but anyway.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Anyone want to adjourn?
Here for you.
Anyone want to adjourn?
I'm gonna have to make that motion.
No, we're staying. Only, we don't have, she didn't put on the...
I know, we just addressed the question. You guys have a...
Good night, everybody.
Who was asking? Who cares anymore?
I do.
I was just the landfill. You guys questioned... It's okay. Don't worry about it.
No, do you have something?
Well, no, what I was gonna say is you were talking about whether curbside was covered, whether the...
Can you guys take it out of the hall, please? We're still working. Sorry.
I was looking at closure on the landfill, because you commented on whether or not, you know, whether or not the curbside and the recycling and that whole thing. So I'm just saying, under definition, closure shall mean the activities required which result in permanent cessation of MSW solid waste landfill program. So that, you know, that's closure, but we have, they were responsible, shall perform, cost to be performed at its sole cost and expense, a curbside collection program, which shall include both the collection and disposal of MSW for the residents of town as further set forth in Exhibit H for a period of twenty years commencing on the data execution for the term of the extension agreement, whichever is longer, yada, yada, yada. So the curbside doesn't say recycling. Was that all? I mean, they were taking everything, and then they were...
I believe in Section H, which is the terms of recycling.
Right.
And the terms of trash, it lists recycling.
You can't put recycling in there, or you're not supposed to put recycling in.
It lists recycling, yeah.
Right, having gone to H, which I have in here, right by I.